Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting in the Round Lake Area Board of Education on October twentieth, twenty twenty five at seven P M from the Round Lake High School Media Center. If I can get started first with a roll call please.
Mrs. Clinger?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Jewett?
Here.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Here.
Mr. De Vera?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we'll need an approval of meeting agenda as posted online if I can get a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Ms. Larson. Roll call please.
Mrs. Clinger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries, we have an approved agenda and first up on that are his communications to the board and our strategic plan monthly update. Take it away.
Hi there, I will take it away with an update on theme A, Goal Three, Empower. So this is implementing the new three-year PD plan designed to increase student achievement, increase rigor, and raise expectations. So in terms of the first strategy, this pertains to elementary instructional coaching. All of our coaches have enrolled at least a quarter, but now more like a third of staff in instructional coaching. And that entails setting a student-focused goal and tracking progress toward that goal, and it's the most personalized PD we offer. Then the PLC reset at secondary is continuing with DCs creating learning experiences for their own departments. And most of those are focused very closely on creating enrichments and interventions for students and planning reteaching for students who need more support. So we are on track with theme A, Goal Three.
Good evening, we're mine is theme B, Meeting the Unique Needs of Learners and Strategy B, Craft Revisions to Existing Special Education Service Pathways Building on the Work That Started During the Twenty Four Twenty Five School Year. Building on work initiated in the Twenty Four Twenty Five School Year Collaborated with Teaching and Learning on Catalysts for Educational Change, C E C. To advance revisions to the district's Special Education Service Pathways Development Plan. Together, we identified the participants, total sessions, and purpose of each focus group. One group comprised of the Special Education Leadership Collaborative, S L C. Will focus on ensuring all students receiving special education services have equitable access to and a positive experience within all Round Lake Area schools. The second group comprised of the Special Education Case Managers will focus on developing key competencies essential for a high-quality service delivery model aligned with M T S S.
Alright, there are several different strategic plan goals that fall under teaching and learning. So the one I decided to highlight this evening is actually in theme B, Meeting the Unique Needs of Learners and Goal Three. That specifically focuses on our multilingual education. I wanted to highlight Strategy A that is that speaks to making sure that we're providing professional development in the area of effective by literacy instructional strategies. This past month, we spent time with our consultant, Adelante Educational Specialists. And every time that they deliver professional development, they always ask the staff, what did you get out of this? And then what do you want out of this in the future? Because we continue to work with them throughout the year. So under the leadership of our multilingual administrative team, they have shared with staff, here's what you're telling us, and so here's how we're going to respond. Which speaks to a lot of the professional development that they continue to provide through the Adelante partnership. And then also you'll see on the agenda this evening, there's a request to begin working with a new consultant as well for some additional PD. So just wanted to highlight the work in the M L E department.
Good evening, I'd like to share an update with the board on theme C, Social Emotional Development. Inspire Goal One, which is aligning second step with identified skill gaps in social emotional learning skills. So thank you to the board for approving the B C B A position. So this year we're able to provide support through the social emotional learning team and the behavior team, which is led by the B C B A, which is a board certified behavior analyst. And we worked to develop procedures to allow assistant principals and principals to access social emotional learning supports and behavior support. So we provide training to assistant principals. So we are clear on what those procedures look like to support our students in social emotional learning and behavior in the buildings.
Okay, I'm also going to report on theme C, Social Emotional Development. This one is for Goal Four in particular, Strategy B, which is embarking on a series of events to create opportunities to sustain wellness opportunities for staff. And I am pleased to inform you, and I'll be coming back with much more detailed responses on this. But out of four hundred and ninety responses to our survey, we had four hundred and twenty-four of which rated it at a five, one to five, five being the highest. They were very excited to enjoy their session specifically, but then overall wellness for the day. Out of the responses, we received eighty-two percent at a five as well. So we had an overwhelming response with many different comments that we're going to bring back to you with a little bit more information, but just wanted to let you know the wellness day very much appreciated by the staff.
Yeah, I'll provide a few updates on theme D, which is parent, community, and school partnerships, and also one from theme E, Securing the Future. So next week, we will be hosting our first of this year Stakeholder Advisory Committee or Group Meeting. This brings our teachers, administrators, parents, community members, and boards, board members together to discuss and share input regarding academic and technology priorities. And just wanted to thank Casey Kurtz for leading us in that initiative. Our communications team has continued to deliver district welcome boxes to local businesses. We began this last year and continue that process into this year. And then for securing the future, just wanted to thank Mary Lamping and team for organizing another successful health and life safety inspection at all of our buildings this fall, and she'll be coming back in November for the updates on the progress made in those areas.
And I will also be speaking to theme E, Securing the Future. We will, I will actually be highlighting Strategy B, Ensuring Transparent Goal-Driven Budget Process That Supports Strategic and Academic Priorities. We just rolled out our F Y twenty-six budget with the new budget form that includes a very detailed section on footnotes that really is designed to help not only communicate to the board, but also to communicate to the community a lot of what those financial reports kind of leave out, which is the narrative. So we're very excited about that. As well as we are holding our second round of our Budget Officer Meetings next week. And we've already received some positive feedback from those meetings, and we are excited to continue those meetings going forward.
That's the update. So we'll keep bringing these back and on a regular basis, we'll periodically provide you verbal updates. And just want to confirm that this is working document and it really drives our work, so, and priorities, so.
You guys were so succinct, thank you. It was very impressive.
Any additional questions or clarifications for the board? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next up, we will go to Transportation Department update, Mrs. Bennett and Mr. Garcia.
Okay, we're excited to be here this evening, Louis Garcia, Director of Transportation, and myself to provide an update to the board regarding progress that we've made since the start of the year related to our Transportation Department, particularly with the launch of the new routing system and the new parent app that we have in place. This slide just gives you an idea of what we'll be speaking of this evening. Again, the routing software implementation, the new My Ride K Twelve Parent App status, staffing progress, driver training initiative, the assessment we've done on our walker and buster boundaries, customer service enhancements, and our winter readiness plans. So first up is the implementation of the new routing system. So as you know, we contracted with a Traversa, our transportation system, which allows the team to route all of our transportation in districts. It is different than what we've had in the past in that each of our drivers have iPads installed on the buses that provide them with routing instructions, basically. And then there is GPS that allows us to see where all the buses are throughout their routes. It provides reports to us that will allow us to assess more accurately where there may be issues or where things are going well. It also allows for the rider roster where we're using the Scan On System with our student IDs and then seating charts and, and more. So I'll just go over some of the bullet points here on the slide here. But one of the greatest things I think that we found in the system is not, not just the scanning on and off of the buses, but the reports that are brought forward to us to better assess the routes that we have in place. So there has been, it's been a process since the beginning of the year. We have found that some of the districts that we worked with that before actually going forward with this program don't use it to the degree that we are already. And some of the reports have needed to be, I guess, not fixed, but modified slightly to ensure that we are receiving the correct information on them. So for example, there's a daily departure and arrival report that Louis is reviewing. But we are finding that not all of the schools were picking up the buses within the geofence accurately at the different points at, in the time of the day. So Louis has done a great job in working with our representatives there at Traversa, Tyler, to ensure that those reports are modified appropriately so that he can then respond more accurately and more proactively as we run into different situations that will come along with transportation. Another thing that we have found, he's had, sorry, Louis could probably speak to some of this as well, and he will, but the user group interactions, wanted to call that out. He's had some really great interactions so far this year in working with other transportation directors of other school districts. And making sure that we are learning from them and they are learning from us about the different challenges and benefits that we have experienced so far utilizing this new software. The My Ride K Twelve Parent App, rave reviews so far this year since the implementation. Again, what we have found in Mr. Garcia working with other districts is some people utilize the scanning on and off, but not necessarily the parent app. Or there are other parts of the, the Traversa system that they may not be using either. But to date, we have found that of our bus eligible students, there are at least seventy-three percent of those students have it, who have at least one individual who have a profile on the mobile app. So that doesn't count. Well, I guess you could count those that are not included in the seventy-three percent could be from families who are bus eligible, but they actually decide to drive their student to and from school. So they may not even decide to have the app on their phone. We have, Louis has done a great job this year in working with Dr. Lamping also in developing some standard operating procedures connected to the app as far as communications go and, and other areas that are aligned directly with the new routing software and the mobile app. We will be putting out a satisfaction survey to our families here in the next couple of weeks, assessing how they're feeling about the new routing software. And also the parent app as well as other items connected to the transportation department. And that will provide us with a lot of good information on how we respond to that going forward. And then challenges to date with the app, I think we put out today, first time we haven't had access to it is today, but that's along with a lot of the other systems that are connected to A W S. This is one of them. So our parent app has been down today. We're, we're hopeful that we'll be looking in better shape tomorrow with that.
Good evening. I'm here to give a staffing update and some of the job functions. For drivers, fifty-three positions, we currently only have three current vacancies. So we've done a great job since late July in getting some good drivers into the district. Thirteen brand-new drivers, that's a lot of new faces, a lot of training. A lot of sit downs with drivers and trying to help them with the tablet and getting their routes correctly. I'm happy to report that all subcontracted drivers are, are out of the district, they're not helping us anymore. I did send an email to the vendor thanking them. They've been a tremendous partner for us throughout the, our driver shortages for over a year. But I'm glad that, that we have all our, our drivers are going to be in-house within the next couple of weeks once I've filled these three vacancies. Secretaries, we have two secretaries. They're in charge of routing, dispatch, records, supporting families and schools. They also serve as backup drivers. There's a lot of times that we either have a lot of field trips or sporting events going out in the afternoon, and we need all hands on deck. Second secretary began in late July. She's done a fantastic job learning all of our softwares, whether it's charters and the actual dispatching of the new system. Mechanics, we have two. Their jobs include vehicle safety, compliance, service records, routine maintenance and inspections, roadside assistance, grounds equipment maintenance, staying current on evolving repair technologies. They also have a new system with Tyler, and they love it. It, it, it alerts them when any, any vehicle needs to come in and serviced. It is giving them the, the tools to make sure that they don't fall behind on any preventative maintenance on any of our vehicles. Something else that, that they do is the, the DOT inspections that were always done on paper, those are also now computerized. The, the drivers do them on the tablets. If they, if they have anything that needs attention, they mark it on the tablet and then that communication goes straight over to the mechanics and it pulls open a work, a work order for them. Once it gets fixed, that, that work order is closed and the driver gets notified that that item's been, been, been taken care of. So it's a really neat and streamlined process that now the shop has with the drivers as well. Accomplishments, well, nearly fully staffed, team stabilization. It's been a long time since we've been fully staffed in, in our department, and I'm looking forward to these new three, three drivers that, that soon will be jumping on. Ongoing training and support of new routing software and equipment. I still continue to, to get some training. I have some training set up early next, next month with Tyler. So the training for us still continues. Increased SOPs to ensure accuracy in routing and communications as Heather had mentioned. Bus driver training program, this position obviously was, is new to us this year. Our trainer has done an amazing job getting these, these drivers in, trained. It was approved in twenty twenty-four last year. She's gone through thirteen drivers since, since late July. Their CDL and air brake endorsements, some of the candidates that come in, come in with CDLs, but they don't have the air brake endorsement that we need to, to, to use, you know, they can't jump on our buses without that endorsement legally. So they have to go and get the permit themselves, and once they would have that permit, then they come see us and the trainer, and then the trainer works with them, has to take them to the DMV. And I'm happy to report that she's had nobody come back, so she's had everybody pass that she takes down there. Development of training calendar materials, she will also be helping in assisting on some PD for our drivers for the rest of the school year.
Okay, next up is the Walker and Buster Boundaries Assessment. You're aware at one of our most recent board meetings, we brought forward a proposal that a new serious safety hazard location be identified. That was in response to one of the issues that we were able to, or that we came across at the beginning of this year as we implemented the new system. The, some of the information did not carry over properly from the old system to the new. And however, it did help us identify that we didn't have an appropriate form in place with I dot for the area for McGee near the Murphy boundary. So we are providing transportation to the students in that area to McGee at this time. We did submit the form to I dot to have that formally approved, and we anticipate that it will. So we're, we're in the middle of that process. So what that ended up leading us to is really a more of a collaborative effort in assessing those areas across the, the district. So at the beginning of the year, she brought forward the list of approved hazardous areas for, that we have with I dot. And now what we're doing, Louis, myself, and then Corey Fink, who's our Director of Safety, we're working on that together. So we'll be assessing that across the district, all of those that we have in place now. Do we need to make any modifications, any new, do we, can some go away? So we'll be using this year to work together on making sure that that is where it needs to be across the district. Let's see, we, we do have one on the agenda tonight for Round Lake Middle. So similar to what you approved for McGee at one of our last meetings, we're asking the same for the intersection at Rollins and Lotus. So for years and years, Round Lake Middle School students have been crossing Rollins to, that live within the one point five miles. We do have a, a crossing guard at that location, but given what we just did for McGee, that we saw this as a similar situation, we completed the form and the numbers totaled to where we believe that I dot will approve that. That will impact about two hundred students. So those students will be eligible for transportation and no longer crossing over Rollins Road. So that's what this, this process has done for us. So a little bit of a bumpy start with that Walker Boundary issue that we had with McGee, but it has led us down the path to do a better, more thorough assessment and find some meaningful impact. And find some um meaningful impact. So we anticipate that it will be through that assessment for this year, no later than March. And then each year we will build this into our regular review process. Customer service improvements, we're we're always trying to do this in all of our departments. I would say at the beginning of the year, um every year, especially probably this one with the implementation of our new software. Um it was tough to get a hold of anyone who had questions. Um or concerns about transportation. So we have been working. Um a lot on what that can look like moving forward. We've been, we meet weekly with our union president. She has some really good feedback on how we might be able to do that as well. So Louis has come up with some good ideas on how we might be able to utilize other staff. To um provide additional assistance during those heavy times of the year. So obviously at the start of the year, the change of the semester. Um and other uh times where you might see some regular changes for transportation. He also came up with the idea of providing a transportation open house. At different points in the year that are aligned with our registration process. So that as um there are questions about transportation, they can ask them right there. Um and then not have to make a phone call and be put into a voicemail that might be full because of um how busy. The office does get at certain points of the year. Our goal is to really provide a response to families within twenty four to forty eight hours. Uh with the implementation of the My Ride app, there is a communication tool through that as well. Um so we will be utilizing that and uh building upon the standard operating procedures that. Uh some of which we've mentioned tonight, but some of those are directly related to communication. Okay, heading into the crazy winter months that uh we vow not to experience the same things that we have in the past. Uh as you know, last year we had brand new buses and we ran into some pretty significant issues with. Uh them not starting properly on our excessively cold days. Uh so Louis has put together a cold start team. And uh will be, he's already, I think, started having those meetings to make sure that we have everyone in place and we understand. Exactly what we need to do in response to uh what we saw in the past. So uh we gave the board regular updates on where we were with progress with this situation that we experienced. But um with the, I think the two mechanics that we have on on the team. And working with our vendor, uh where we purchased the the uh buses from. We are in a really good spot to be able to provide um appropriate buzzing and not have to shut down school because of this. The uh um mechanical issues that we experienced last year. Uh our mechanics are also responsible for maintaining and uh preparing all of our equipment, not just the buses, but those. The snow blowers and all the things that we use for clearing our schools uh during the winter months. And then uh I think I just mentioned over on the right there, the our collaboration with the vendor. They were um in the end very responsive, would you agree?
I just wanna add with the vendor. They were out about two weeks ago assessing the filters again and coming up with the game plan. Whether we're changing them again or what the plan is before the colds, before the cold comes, right? So that's gonna continue. We're gonna, we're gonna put some pressure on them to make sure that uh that we have this correct fuel filter. Before the actual cold weather comes in. Uh something else that would that I wanna add also is that we're changing our fuel just for the cold months. We're we're going to a uh a different blend that will. I wouldn't say guarantee, but pretty much guarantee because I think it's rated like like negative forty degrees, like actual temperature. So on top of all the preventative things that we do prior to the cold and treating the fuel underground, treating the bus. Uh we're adding that that um that type of fuel as well uh during the cold, only in the winter months.
Okay, and then future planning, I mentioned some of these as we went along, but really the development of additional SOPs. Uh connected to the new systems that we have, the type of service that we want to provide, et cetera. Um the planning of the open houses that we've mentioned this coming spring, summer, fall. Uh and then working proactively with our uh other department partners. Uh for example, we've had two me- two meetings. So far with technology and preparation for the launch of new routes for second semester at the high school. Mister Peterson was on in on that meeting, uh Louis, myself and then our technology department. Just discussing some of the uh challenges that we encountered in prior years as we headed into the uh winter break. So we have some things in place to be sure, uh reviewing of reports, getting data ahead of time. Which students are actually changing schedules. Uh Louis is working with the vendor to see if we can have um kind of a a side project going on. So that when we roll over from first semester into second, we have uh almost an immediate um access of routes for families. Before the, just the few days before they're returning from uh winter break into second semester. And all of that to be said to our long-term outcomes, looking for sustainable data-informed transportation operations aligned to district strategic priorities. Any questions that you might have for either one of us at this time?
I have, I have quite a few. So let me start with the few that you kinda answered or at least um hit on. Uh you know, as we know today, AWS Amazon Web Services was down. Obviously that affected our our busing app. What what communication are we sending to our families or how can we help them when this app is down?
So we sent out a message first thing this morning, uh a text message to, it went to all families. Uh letting them know that it was down. Uh we're in the process of really learning what what the issue was at at that moment. And then later in the day, once we were, we're hopeful that it would be back up and running by the end of day. It was not, so uh Ms. LeBlanc sent out another text message to our families, just letting them know. It was connected to AWS and it is not up and running quite yet. Good news is when Louis was walking it, it appears that it might be coming back online again. Uh and hopefully we'll be ready by morning. Uh but once we're able to confirm that everything is up and running again, we will uh put that out to families again, that we're back in business.
So did it affect those students when scanning on to the bus?
It did do some effect to the tablets and the scanning on to the buses. What was interesting is that when uh the the tablets were rebooted. Uh we had the drivers reboot their their tablets and all the scans showed on, which was interesting.
So I'm just wondering what process if we need to put in place, um cause unfortunately I'm just won't be the last time this happens. But so our bus drivers and our families and most importantly the students as they're getting on, because again that could cause a little bit of bottleneck. And some frustration, so that most importantly, the bus drivers know how to respond to that. So we will put.
Uh this afternoon, we 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 um again, we had the students get scanned on. And then once those tablets were rebooted, we had all the information. The the information on um the actual transportation. Software was also lagging as well, so we weren't seeing it. We would reboot and then it would come online. So the feedback I have or what I'd like to know is that should we continue scanning on and then that information catches up? This morning I was seeing scans from driver, I mean from students. Because I was looking at a a particular route and I was looking for scans and they were showing even without the tablet working. So I'm not sure how they interface like that. So those are, th- those are the questions I have for, for going back to the vendor as far as like. Will that information stay somewhere where when things come back up, will they see it or are they seeing it?
And that's a contingency, so the tablets provide them with their route. So turn right, turn left. However, we have a backup plan for this is the route should the tablet not be working. So that is something that is already in place with the department.
Okay, so good to know because obviously this is our first outage or interruption with uh this new platform. What they come back with and what, if anything, we would develop out of such an outage.
Yeah, we have all the routes printed, so if a driver uh needed a route, we provided them this afternoon. Like any other drivers that, especially the new drivers that are not familiar with the their routes themselves, a paper route was still given to them.
And again, there's an interruption to the students and the families, so that's what we need to dive into, cause we need to get that information to them. That affects those schools. It it's a trickle-down effect, so we need to investigate that and have something in place that hits all aspects of the transportation.
Yes, once we're back up and running and we have an opportunity to to meet with the reps to see what what their recommendation is. For if there are future outages, we then can know right off the bat, like if it goes down. Transportation dispatch knows what exactly to communicate to the drivers and what to do, whether they should have students scan or not. If they're not, then we're communicating with families about why. So that as they're looking at their app and wondering why their student isn't showing on a bus, that that is the reason.
Right, so again, I I know we're Amazon or you know those the applications are still recovering from this outage. But as we come out of it, it would be good to get and get that report back and how we've, how we, what we've learned from it and what we're doing. Should this happen again? I mean, obviously we don't want it to happen again, but these platforms are out of our hands. But we still need to be prepared as a district for the students, staff and the families. Okay, so that's that one. Uh the next one is, you touched about doing a satisfaction survey for parents for feedback. Did you see the timeline? Did I, I'm sorry, did I miss it?
Within the next two weeks, we'll put that out.
Two weeks. Is this something that we'll do annually or do? In the next two weeks and at the end of this school year to get parents feedback?
Yes, I ju- I think it that would be good to see progress. I'm just, I, we'd need to determine what the right timeline would be on that. If it's the end of the year or if it's a little bit earlier. It, some of the questions may not apply. A little bit later in the school year, it might be more of a, we get some questions at the end of the year and then do another launch in the fall, like what went well. Uh what are some areas for improvement? But I I wouldn't see doing the exact same survey at the end of this year, but maybe modified in some way, yes.
It right, I don't think it would be the same with the implementation of a new platform. But I think uh doing a yearly survey to parents on transportation would not be a bad thing. I don't think we've ever done yearly. As I said, I didn't think so and I've been here twenty years, I don't remember. Um so I think it's something we should be doing to get the feedback, you know, again. You know, getting the students there, you know, from home to school and then school back to home safely is paramount to everyone in this district. So we should be getting that kind of feedback. And then of course with doing that survey, I would anticipate those results coming back to the board for review.
Yes, we can do that and what I would prefer to do is once we get the results, we uh develop. A framework for how we're responding to some of the areas that come back.
Yes, yes, of course. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, the next one I have is regarding the. I think it's under customer service improvements. So it's noted improved response times twenty four to forty eight hours. But my first question is, is I think the board has heard multiple times and communication from the community is. Nobody answers phones, nobody answers emails. So my first question is for emails. The emails go directly to your box, correct? Mister Garcia?
No, they, it from the My Ride app?
I'm a parent and I'm having a problem with transportation. I write you directly to your email.
Yes, it will go to my email, yes.
So I think that's probably the first issue. We should have a general mailbox for transportation. It should never be any one person's mailbox. If you're out all of a sudden, FMLA, there's always change in positions. It should be a general mailbox that's monitored by the director of transportation and then your boss, which would be Mrs. Bennett. Of course, you can give shared access, but I think there's a better way for that, those communications to come from community to the district.
And the secretaries in the department as well.
Yeah, I mean whoever that would be, but I think it should be a general mailbox and not an individual. Because again, if somebody's out, something happens, if I send an email to you stating I have an issue. If you're on FMLA, if whatever is the issue, how do I know it's gonna be answered?
That's a great point.
Okay, so with that, if we have a general mailbox that, you know, I don't know, RLAS one sixteen transportation. Dot com. Really, a service level of twenty four hours really should be sufficient. But I think we need to put this in place first. Because again with, as a parent who's writing the district on a busing issue, I personally don't wanna wait two days. Because now you're probably just making me more mad because you didn't respond to me. So I think forty eight hours is too long. So that's the email portion. So now again, now if I wanna call transportation, it's a general number, right? And we hear that nobody answers the phone. So if I'm calling and nobody answers, does it just goes to voicemail, which again we hear voicemail is full? How does it not go to somebody else? Like, we, there's two secretaries, right? Should bounce between the secretaries.
So the general number does bounce? The um they're also, they have their individual lines as well that they could call.
So then why are we hearing voicemail is full?
I I think that at the start of the year and the the flow of calls that we we received. And that's typical at the start of every year. That's what we've encountered. So it's not just, uh I think we will definitely put the. The general email box in place and then also make sure that the phones are routed appropriately. Um but also what other type of coverage can be provided during those heavy times. So we had a conversation brief last week. We still need to work throughout the logistics of it, but we have sub bus drivers that are on site. Are those individuals able to pick up extra phone calls at that time? At the start of this year, it was kind of last minute. But we sent some of our translators over there at the start of the year to help manage some of those calls. They're not exactly. Uh up to speed on all the transportation processes, so they were basically taking messages when they were able to answer. Um so really working through what that looks like how going forward is part of our work. That's not complete.
But I think, you know, parents just want to be able to get in touch with someone, even if it's. I can't address this issue for you directly right now, but I can take this information and give it to the right person. For phone calls to be unanswered or parents getting full voicemail. Again, when you're talking about their student, their child, not getting a hold of somebody or emails not being in. Or answered correctly or properly or in a timely manner. It just makes things worse, so we should have systems in place. So that communication comes freely and clearly to transportation and they can get addressed in an appropriate time. So I would love to see, I think we should, that should come back to the board when that email is implemented. How we're addressing, how the phone lines bounce, so that we have app ample coverage for when parents call. So that's that one. And the next one you mentioned about hazardous area list that you reviewed and now we found McGee or Round Lake Middle. Was that, what process do we have for that? Cause I think that kinda got lost in that implementation of this new software. So we wanna make sure that doesn't happen again.
So uh when we're carrying over the information from the old system to the new, it wasn't just a dump of information. So the development of the boundaries were manual eh during that process. So it it didn't carry over because it was manual. Um so that, I mean, hopefully we're not changing systems too often, but. We learned a lot through this this uh transition process from one system to another. So uh there were no times that our rep was asking us to. Uh you know, sharing, these are points that we should make sure that we're. Uh checking before we actually go live. That was an area that was missed along that transition process. Even though we were working on it for several months before we launched.
But do we have this hazardous area list exported somewhere so it doesn't just live? In the transportation software? So again, again, I don't think we're changing software anytime real soon. But again, it should be exported and housed somewhere outside of the transportation software.
So we have the approved hazardous areas that have been have been approved through IDOT. But as far as a uh some sort of electronic version of all the addresses that are impacted. Not outside of the transportation.
But we have the areas, though.
We do.
Then we could check that against our.
Before this year, we T brought forward the list of approved I dot. I dot approved forms, that's not something we had done in the past. So, uh, now that we have that as part of our annual process, it's very helpful. So it's it's automatically built into our assessment each year going forward.
Okay, so that that's the, okay, I I know, I'm not saying export the addresses. But again, that when I say the hazardous areas list, those corners, Washington Cedar Lake, uh, you know. Cedar Lake, whatever, we should have those, so we know how to bump those against the addresses of our families. Okay, so we've got a process now, okay. Uh, next question. So in future planning the next steps, it says finalize SOP implementation, annual out review calendar, but on. Me find it. On staffing update under accomplishments, increased SOPs to ensure accuracy. So I guess the question is. What SOPs have we increased and which ones I guess are still outstanding? Finalize SOP implementation, I guess, not.
I should have noted all of them that have actually been finalized, but some examples are. Uh, coverage for how uh charters are are. The communication of charters, so um if something happens and a driver doesn't show up for a. To pick up from a charter or a field trip, uh, what system is in place to be able to contact someone if there's an issue? That's that's one example. Um, the the process of reviewing the daily arrival departure reports, that's one of the SOPs. Um, so as we learn the system, get to know the system more and more, there will be additional SOPs that are developed. But I can provide you in the in the weekly perhaps, those that have already been finalized.
Yeah, I guess it it because said increased SOPs and finalizing, I'm thinking, so where? Where does this really starting and stopping, I wasn't sure, just kind of left too many questions for me?
Yes, there's, I I think there's still a lot that we need to learn about the system. And as we encounter different things, that we've encountered a lot of things since since July, August, since the launch of this. Um, but we'll can need to continue to assess definitely going forward, what what is needed and. Even outside of the regular standard operating procedure, how tos, um, like. There's a dashboard that the secretaries are using in the in the department now. Where uh it's a quick look to see if there are any students out there that don't have a bus stop assigned, for example. Um, so how that's not necessarily an SOP, but it is a how to and what what are you looking at and how frequently are you looking at that? So all of that is being assessed.
Yeah, the the dashboards, yeah, a little different on the SOP versus processes. That really affect our families and and students, but that kind of leads me to the. I think that's the last question, when you say dashboard, so with this great new platform. Uh, you mentioned all the reports, reporting that can happen. So I know we do get updates on transportation, but we really haven't had a lot of reports or data to provide the board. What kind of data now, and I know you're still getting familiar with this application. What kind of data reporting do you think we can provide the board with this new platform?
Like as far as what, like from the routes perspective or?
Anything. So as a board, we we wanna know how our families and stat or in this case, it'd be the families, the students are being affected by transportation. What is increased, has our ridership increased, are we seeing a decrease? What issues are we having with the application itself, like again, we just had an outage? We asked to hear how that's affecting the bus drivers and the students.
I think one that, so the daily arrival and departure report will be, that's like the one I'm most excited about. Because once that is actually um. Corrected on every route, which they're still working through that process, Lewis can set a filter. And at the end of each route of the day, he can say, show me any buses that were delayed by more than ten minutes. And it's just a quick look at all of the buses that went on the high school route for first hour. Second hour, eighth hour, ninth hour, separated by routes, and then each of our elementary routes, middle routes. And then it's a quick go to, it's a it's an easy conversation starter with him and the driver, whatever route that is, to say what was the issue. Are there too many students at this bus stop, or did you encounter some sort of traffic issue? Or if there's some sort of trend, does there need to be a modification to the route? So I think those are things that we can come back with over time, like once the re- report is actually clean and he can utilize it on a regular basis. How have we seen improvements over time?
Right, trend data is exactly what would the board should be looking for, what at least. I would think we'd walk to sees trend data, and again, we're at what fifty three drivers? Are we seeing such an increase and we're talking about adding a route of two hundred ish students to Round Lake Middle? I'm assuming we're gonna need more, maybe, I don't know. But again, you can provide that and providing that data to the board, cause for me, I think two hundred students, wow, that's a lot. Would we need more buses, would we need more drivers?
Yes, there's a a variety of things that I think we'll be able to report on, uh, it. Not just on the data reporting that we get from the system, but also the progress that we make, we make on the satisfaction survey that we put out.
Okay, I lied, I have one more. Looking at my notes, uh, oh, you mentioned open house uh for families, which you gotta think is a a great idea. Uh, I don't think we've ever done that either. And with having the new buses and again, it's not all the parents are have the privilege of taking their kids to the bus stop and see the buses and see. The technology that's happening on the buses now, so I I think I think that's a great idea. Okay, now I'm done.
I had a a question, just uh Mrs. Negretty McGinley answered, had asked a lot of the questions that I had. But I wanted some uh just some clarity for the community. The students who found themselves without busing. At this start of the year, are they now receiving busing?
And then, once we get the final report from I dot that says that uh. Form is approved, which we anticipate within the next few weeks here, we will communicate with them and say, this is going forward. So we had initially said we we uh found an issue. Now, transportation is provided for the remainder of this year, but at that time, we didn't anticipate being able to provide it after this year. So we will let them know that it is continuing, thank you.
What's in the way of us just doing it now with while we're pending the I dot approval?
Because technically, if it's not approved by I dot, we can't claim it for our transportation claim.
I've got a handful, you you nabbed a bunch of them. No, 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 that's good, um. But it is around, I I'm just in terms of the way I'm thinking about reporting in general. So one of the categories of reporting is is right, you have the you have the satisfaction, which is the feedback. From the uh from our community, right, that's one, but then the other one is that. The timeliness one that you have, so I guess. But the other one is also the customer service, so that's what I'm hearing, it's almost like another. Another uh data point around speed of of answering. You know, speed of communication, right, that almost seems like that's what I heard are like the three. Categories outside of staffing and outside of equipment, right? But yeah, just like I would love to see what some sort of a dashboard looks like now that we have. The ability to do something like that, which would be really, that'd be really cool.
Think what we can do is based on the feedback, the team can talk and we can actually bring. I mean, I will obviously collaborate, but we'll bring the buckets of data. Back and see if that's what you're interested in, but I mean, I writing down the notes, but I wanna make, I just. Processing time for me, I just wanna think it through as well, like what are the other things we might be able to collect that we're not, that could help? So we've already, I mean, I've written four or five down already.
And and this process takes a while, because you're just building your systems to do that, and so I understand that it's not like. You know, November, right, that's it's not what I'm I'm thinking, but just I love the idea of. Um, because it's such a, it's such a sensitive pain point for, you know, for many, many families. Um, the other, so the other thing I was thinking that stuck to me was really around staffing. And so we said thank you to the subcontractors, but thirteen. Thirteen new drivers is about twenty five percent of the overall staff. So my assumption is there might be some sort of churn or some sort of turnover during the year. By saying thank you, it does that end up not having access to those subcontracted, I'm almost thinking like. We don't need subs anymore, right, that that whole sort of thing, which I I know I'm not thinking about that correctly, so could you share with me? Um, they say thank you, we don't need them now, but chances are probably good, we're gonna need them at another time when it starts getting cold.
So we have s- um, in the fifty three, we have our own subs. Um, that uh take care of uh FMLAs, um. Personal days, sick days and things of that nature, uh, but if we were to see like a long term, like we had. Then yes, they would be open to help us again.
The other thing I wanna, and I'm apologizing in advance, but we raised the 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 rates, do you remember? The but the we raised the floor. Very, very high, and I think in the last two weeks, I've heard from four superintendents that we've hired bus drivers from, from their districts. So that's, it looks like it's working now anyway, and I'm from my memory, from what I remember. I don't know, fifteen years ago, we were among the highest and over and we just didn't keep that pace. And because we raised the rates, we're hiring people from all over the county.
And I actually wanted to add to that, because out of the, there were thirteen people that were trained for air breaks, right?
It was a mix, yeah, most of them are are air break. Um, we haven't, uh, I'm I'm looking at the first person that comes in without the CDL. So we have that, so the trainer that was added also helped, because without that trainer, we wouldn't have been able to train for the air breaks. They would have had to go on, uh, like go outside of of Round Lake. Uh, but that helped out tremendously when we added that position to our department.
Because then that means a hundred percent of the people that were brought on were given that some sort of training from that trainer, correct? Or was there just turnover within that person training the thirteen? Does understand what I mean, so it's like, did like eighteen people come in, five of them already had all their stuff, all their. Eyes dotted and teeth crossed, or did everyone that came in that have some sort of training, whether it's air air break or air break plus CDL?
Uh, um, some, all thirteen went went through some kind of training.
So that's pretty cool, cause they would have to figure it out on their own without that.
It also took us some time to hire for those additional six drivers that the board approved when we went to partner schools. So we've been trying to recover even from that over the last year, so there's just three left. Of of all of them, can you speak to some of the reasons for uh the turnover that we've experienced?
Yes, we we had some uh some folks that went and got full time jobs last year. Well, we had some early retirements, we had some relocations of drivers that moved uh out of state. Um, and then we had some some terminations of drivers as well, mixed into that. Um, so we never actually caught up, like like Heather just mentioned, we never got those six drivers that we knew were gonna need. Um, and then we had, uh, I believe, two drivers did not return this uh this summer.
I just have a quick question about the phone. Um, do we have like a, and you might have said this and I missed it, but do we have like a timeframe when the phones will be set up so that? People get their messages responded to, because I do consistently hear that the voicemails are full.
I'll provide an update uh to the board by this uh Friday, as to the timeline on that. We'll work with our technology department just to be sure that everything is set up properly and the bouncing is is happening the way it should.
Okay, thank you. Just one last thing, when we establish an internal email box, can we make sure we get that communicated to families?
Right, hearing no additional questions, thank you very much. We will now move to Mrs. Kurtz and the ISB proficiency benchmark update.
Good evening, I am back as a follow up, I'm in the spring, I stood before you and presented on. Proposed updates that the Illinois State Board of Education would be making to proficiency benchmarks and cut scores. So I'm here to share those updates with you this evening. Tonight, I will review again, a brief summary of the need for the change. Um, the Illinois State Board of Education's process in updating the cut scores and proficiency benchmarks. I will review the unified performance levels, the updated cut scores. We'll dive a little bit into understanding proficiency and how it's reported out, and I will also share how we will be interpreting data moving forward. This slide should look familiar, this was one I presented in the spring. Um, the reason Illinois um reviewed the proficiency benchmark and cut scores. Was because in Illinois, we had some of the highest cut scores that mislabeled students who were actually on track for college and career readiness. And they were marked as not meeting based on proficiency standards. The visual on the left hand side is from the National Assessment of Educational Progress, it is a fourth grade math sample. And they, um, what the um assessment did was line up all of the states based on their cut scores. And you can see based on this visual, Illinois had the highest cut scores out of all of the states, um citing a need for change. Again, we talked about that the goal is not to lower the standard for students, but to make the cut scores equitable for students in Illinois. Um, an example we provided was that SAT and ACT cut scores were higher than the college board expectations. The visual on the right is another sample of a student um that graduated high school in twenty twenty two. They are now enrolled at ISU as a double major. They have a um good GPA of three point six, they participated in AP courses, dual credit courses. They had certifications in industry and work-based learning, they were active in the school community, participating in different clubs. However, their proficiency um scores would have labeled them as not proficient in English language arts and in math. The process is be took to um review the proficiency benchmarks and update the cut score started with the development of performance level descriptors. These descriptors are specific to grade and content area rubrics. That give a range of knowledge and skills and practices that students should know and be able to demonstrate at different performance levels on an assessment. So the state created nine different teams with a hundred plus educators on those nine teams. They then took the work that they did on the performance level descriptors and did a listening tour statewide to receive feedback. There were two rounds of public comment on those performance level descriptors. And then, um, the proposed development of the or the proposed performance level descriptors were brought to the Illinois State Board of Education for review and approval. The next process that was worked through the summer was the process of standard setting, which is. Where educators and experts establish the cut scores for the different assessments. There were twenty seven panels, one per subject and grade with twenty five teachers on each. In Round Lake, we did have a representative of on the math panel, um, which was really interesting to have a little bit of insight into the work being done. Um, then the state did some policy alignment by the our state superintendent and some of his advisors. And then the proposed cut scores went to the Illinois State Board of Education for review and approval. The dissemination of the new data, so in August, we received the updated cut scores. In September, with our embargoed raw data for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the Illinois Science Assessment and ACT. We received the proficiency levels. October first, actually, October second, the district report card opened for preview, which allows educators. Um, and district office staff time to review the data that's being reported and check for accuracy and validate it. On October thirtieth, our report card will go live and the data will formally be released. So before you, you will see four new unified performance levels. This is um something that is now standardized across the IAR assessment ISA and ACT. Before IAR had five levels with varying um names for the performance levels. ISA had four levels with varying names and ACT also had different levels with different names. Now, there are four standard performance levels across all of the assessments. Um, which supports a common understanding of language when we're talking about proficiency on an assessment. Um, I won't read them to you, but I did highlight the differences between each of the levels, there are subtle differences um that are called out. These reflect the updated cut scores, so it, the cut scores equate to the lowest number needed at each grade level and content area to obtain proficiency. So you'll see a column for E L A, English Language Arts, a column for math and a column for science. Um, some definite things to call your attention to, you'll notice that the old cut scores were standard for I A R and I S A at seven hundred and fifty. That was standard across E L A for proficiency and standard for math across proficiency. Um, that's where some of the inequities were found between the different grade levels and there was a need to update and change those cut scores. So you'll see by grade level across the table, um, the new cut scores for each grade level. Um, and those cut scores reflect differences that each grade level needs to hit for proficiency now. Something to call attention to and highlight, if you look at the column for science, the Illinois Science Assessment is now only taken in grades five and eight. A C T covers science proficiency for the high school, so grade eleven no longer needs to take the I S A. And something also to note is while we, uh, modified the cut scores for E L A and math, ensuring, um, that they were more, um, equitable for students, it was identified that the science cut scores were too easy, so those became more challenging. So you'll notice an increase in the expectations for the cut scores under our science. Um, please note that the A C T scores are better aligned, or they've been adjusted to better reflect alignment with the College Board as previously they were higher expectations, um, than the College Board. So how we look at proficiency moving forward, you'll notice across the tab, there are those four proficiency benchmark levels. Um, and I just gave an example right underneath of fifth grade E L A and what the cut score ranges would look like at each of those levels, because in between each of the proficiency benchmark is a new cut score. Um, proficiency is defined, is demonstrating students that are on learning or on track for their learning. And then the performance levels are the score ranges that divide the full spectrum of performance into different categories. So states get to determine the number of levels, the cut scores within each level and what qualifies as proficient. For proficiency benchmark and cut scores, those are the scores a student needs to reach on a state assessment to be considered again on track for their learning. So why does proficiency matter? It matters, um, really for four different facets. First, it, it matters for reporting, states report out, out every year as part of summative designations and on the report card, how many students at each school, the school scored proficient on each assessment through a proficiency rate. It also matters for accountability, so these new cut scores will matter for our summative designations and they will be reported on the Illinois School Report Card. And we use it as one mul, one of the multiple measures to determine student success or where extra support is needed for buildings or, um, supportive of, um, funding that is received from the state level. It also matters for local decision-making. We use the state assessment scores along with our local assessments, so like I Ready at elementary and middle school, to intervene or enrich on student learning and make instructional decisions. And finally, it's important for school improvement, we use that data to improve teaching and learning for all students. This slide reflects that, how the interpretation of data, um, changes a little bit with the identification of the new proficiency benchmarks and the cut scores. So we will still look at proficiency on these assessments as well as student growth percentiles. Um, however, we look at the data a little bit differently because of the changes that were made. So for proficiency, we will still look at the number of students in each grade level that are considered proficient in each of the content areas. It will be reported out as a percentage compared to the state percentage. How we, how this changes, how we view the data, because of the differences, again, that chart is on the bottom right, the differences in how the new cut scores are assigned. Um, the grade levels have different proficiency cut score percentiles, so we can no longer track cohort data over time. We have to look at it in isolation, um, which is a bummer, I loved cohort data, but we can still reflect back on it, but we can't use it to compare. Proficiency between content areas also cannot be compared any longer because of the, um, proficiency levels changing. So again, before it was straight seven fifty for E L A and math, but now those numbers are different. And with the, um, cut score changes, the, um, E L A benchmarks are generally easier now than math. And the science proficiency benchmarks increased in demand, so we saw the rise in the cut scores there. We can however, look at student growth percentiles year over year. That tells us how much students grew compared to their peers. It is reported out on the Illinois School Report Card. And instead of using performance levels, it's looking at raw scale scores. So no matter where a student started, you can compare, did they grow over time? It is reported out as a percentile. And it indicates only if growth is above state average, which would be above the fifty-first percentile, at state average, which is at the fiftieth percentile, or below state average, which is below the forty-ninth percentile. This summarizes all of the changes that the state has made. With these changes outside of this meeting, parents will have received an updated communication on October thirtieth, shared out with a condensed version of this information in parent-friendly terms. Um, it will also coincide with the release of our Illinois School Report Card that goes live on October thirtieth. And then individual, that will also, that communication comes prior to, um, the individual student score reports for I A R and I S A that are set to be sent home on October thirty-first, so that way parents have this knowledge prior to the report card release as well as the score reports coming home. Any questions for me on the updates from the state?
And as a reminder, you're coming back at the next meeting for the formal presentation.
Yes, I'll be back November third to share summative designations and benchmark data with you all, once it's released.
Just wanna be fair. All right, of course I have some questions. Uh, let me just start with kind of how, how you ended. You mentioned on October thirtieth, updated or parent-friendly communication, um, going out. Can you describe to me what parent-friendly might be? Because, you know, when I look at this, it's a lot of professional jargon in here and, you know, we've all been on the board enough where, you know, we can, you know, interpret this, but if I'm a pa, parent and not having the background of being on the school board as long as we have, it could come across like as a foreign language, I, I don't know what you're saying here.
Absolutely, so ISB, um, released a parent, um, four-pager that highlighted all of these different changes. And while, um, they tried to be intentional about highlighting the changes, it still comes across very academic jargon, um, with a different word. So Sarah LeBlanc and I are working in tandem, um, one, to make sure that it's offered in Spanish, the communication, and two, to tailor it down and condense where it's very explicit and, um, we're going to try to do so in a manner that doesn't reflect so much academic jargon.
It, it just, I, uh, for me, you know, as a parent, I'm gonna, okay, what does this mean for my student? What, what is my takeaway? That's, I think that's why, I just wanna make sure, all parents.
Yes, I usually have my husband proofread first, because he doesn't have that, that, that brain and he'll tell me where my errors are.
That's good, okay, great, thank you. Um, then, the next question, you mentioned, um, you know, about the, the co, co, cohort data cannot be followed or used anymore. And I, correct me if I'm, we really belied on that, didn't we not? Yeah, so with, with that, um, you know, no longer being used, I know you mentioned, I, I guess I just wonder how, how's, how are you gonna transition from that? Because that was a big component of our data here.
I was very disappointed to see you'll no longer be able to track cohort data. Um, however, we can still track the cohort data, not in regards to proficiency any longer, but in regards to the growth. So we can track it, the growth is reported out on two ways. It's grow, reported out, um, as compared to the state, so are they at state growth, above state growth or below state growth? But then I can also try to form unique cohorts within, um, the student individual data and group students by grade level and where they started from, to kind of create my own cohort data in regards to growth. So while proficiency cohort data goes away, I can recreate it now. Uh, I'm gonna attempt to recreate it with the student growth percentiles.
We had a meeting just on that issue for over an hour. I mean, they did some really good things here, but I think honestly, we wanna keep tracking the same group of kids over time. But we were talking about ways to customize, to do that internally on some level, but, you know, we're not dated. Well, we're data people, but that's not, we're not statisticians and, and those types of things, so we'll figure something out.
I am working very closely with school edics as well to build out our data dashboards and there's a lot of different visualizations that they can provide. So I'm trying to customize a unique one that would share cohort data through the student growth percentiles.
Okay, so we're kind of just pivoting a little with, I, I don't wanna use the word manipulate, but just pivot how we use that co, data. Okay. Regarding, uh, the science cut scores, you know, you list the old and the new, and as you mentioned, it went up a little bit, because it was too easy apparently. Do we see that being a challenge with that score increasing?
Um, I don't, I don't, I think we're trying to make it more equitable for our students in Illinois and that nationwide, we're reporting out on proficiency for students that are proficient in science, similarly to others across the country. Um, will it impact our data? I can't say yet, because it's embargoed, I know what happened, unfortunately, I can't share just yet, um, but I will speak to it more on November third.
Okay, I have my own suspicions, but I, I, that's why I wanted to ask. Um, so, okay, I will, I will wait, but the question's already there. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, that's, that's all I had, thank you.
Any additional questions from the board?
Are there any consequences if you release that embargoed information?
I'm not sure I wanna find out. Thank you.
Thank you, hearing no additional conversation, thank you very much. Next up, we'll move to sale of obsolete technology equipment and the data that was provided. Mr. Kozak is here, if there's any questions from the board. Hearing done?
I was just gonna add, this was on the finance agenda, uh, Mr. Kozak presented. And again, I just, really just wanted to call, I appreciate his team. Again, even for those materials that are obsolete and really not operable, but we're still finding a way to dispose of them and get dollars back into the district. So again, I just really wanted to commend your team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is the FOIA report as listed. Any questions from the board for the administration in regards to the information provided there? Hearing none, uh, following up on that is contracts under a thousand, and there was nothing to report on that. So we will then move to public comment. As always, members of the public may participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting an electronic public comment form. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes. Electronic public comments are accepted up until noon on the day of a regularly scheduled meeting and the public commenter will be contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, the electronic public comment is provided to all board members in written form. A link to the electronic public comment form is online. We did have electronic public comment, the board was notified of that one and that was sent to everyone. So thank you for the electronic public comment there. And now we'll open it up to, we have local public comment. Just as a note, you hold down the little button in order to be able to be heard, thank you.
Hi everyone, good evening, my name is Rospred Carnegie, I'm a former student at Round Lake High School and I have two main concerns that I think that my classmates have as well. Um, one of them is spreading awareness about rights and safety. I think this is fundamental, um, for families to feel safe. This is in concerning eyes and everything that's been happening between our community. I think that we could do a few things, um, as a school to help families, including, um, show presentations. Um, personally, I know that my parents aren't amazing at checking their emails, so maybe doing things like in Canvas and making students, um, show their parents directly would be helpful. Um, I am aware that we have pamphlets, but if we could make the effort to, um, maybe distribute them to students and they could put them in other places where they're more accessible to parents, like, let's say grocery stores. I know La Mendoza, La Stica are really popular among, um, most of our parents, so that would be a really good resource for them. Um, drive-throughs, I've been to plenty of them with N H S, um, in McGee and here, I know we do them as well. I think that it would be a, like a great opportunity for N H S members to get ours. If we could have, um, donate, if we, if we could collect donations and maybe include food hygiene items and other resources, um, for parents to have. Um, so they are seen, but, so like they don't feel unsafe. Um, another thing I wanted to hit on is transportation. I have a friend that lives one point four miles away from the high school and I know that cutoff is at one point five miles, and I think that extending bus routes would help, um, like take weight off of a lot of parents' shoulders, because for her, her parents are afraid to, um, get out of their houses, so she has to walk and sometimes it gets a little bit late for her, because she also has siblings at McGee. Um, so I think these small things can make a big difference and show families that our schools care. And I think that the best way to understand somebody and actually help them is to put ourselves in their shoes. Just imagine how it is like having to choose between providing for your family and possibly not seeing them again. Um, going out to where it's scared every day that that might be the last time that you get to kiss your son or your daughter. And yeah, that's it, thank you.
Do we have your na, we have your name and slip and everything, we just wanna make sure we can get back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? All right, hearing none, thank you very much as always for that. And we will now move to the superintendent's report and Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Board President Francisco and Board of Education. We would like to thank Schreiber Philanthropy once again this year for their generous grant award of twenty thousand dollars for Saturday family trips and ten thousand dollars for student attendance incentives. Our district continues to benefit from Schreiber's longstanding support of students, families and the larger community. Earlier this month, our three-year grant cycle with the Baxter Center for Science Education at Northwestern University was renewed. The continued partnership strengthens our connection with post-secondary institutions and the workforce, helping us support students with an interest in scientific fields. Through this grant, Baxter provides funding for experiences and materials as well as a mentorship program for members of our future medical panther club. Before I get to the, to the donations, also received recently a commendation from the local area fire department who let us know that the McGee staff on Friday did an exceptional job in dealing with that, uh, the haze in the building and the smelling burn. They called nine-one-one, pulled the pole station at the front entry door. And as far as the fire department is concerned, they handled it perfectly. So, k, kudos to the, to the staff. Below is a list in your written update of recent received donations. Three hundred dollars from Schweitzer Engineering for Beach, the Beach Stem Night. Two thousand dollars from Enchanted Backpack for Beach Elementary School. Pumpkins from Meyer Round Lake Beach for Round Lake Middle School. And ten wellness bags from United Way of Lake County for Beach Staff. I also wanted to say, it's a little bit outside of this, but we had the, uh, the Gorder Foundation, uh, in collaboration with Eric, uh, Help a Family in Significant Need in very, very, very short order, so we're always grateful for that, so I wanted to call that out. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza, any questions for Dr. Mendoza in regards to the superintendent's report? Hearing none, thank you again, and we will now move to committee reports and the finance committee update.
Thank you, yes, the finance committee met earlier today. Uh, we have a few items on the agenda that are on our regular board meeting, so we'll cover those when those come up. And of course, cover those that we are not. Uh, the first one is a contract with Arbiter Pay. This, uh, everybody see you nodding your heads. Uh, this is a software program or platform, I should say, to pay, um, the officials for both middle school and high school, um, events. Uh, this would, uh, take the burden off our finance team. This would pay those officials, take care of their ten ninety-nine, all the, uh, applicable forms with payment for services uh, to an individual. Uh, we made sure it's S A P A compliant, standard operating procedures. Uh, a couple ask in regards to, uh, finance. Uh, should the board approve is, if we want a chair or Ms. Ames Soul to be? Should the board approve is if we want a chair or Ms. Ames Soul to be. The person that actually issues the final payment, of course. The AD or Mr. Carol Zep will go through confirming the individual met their hours and requirements for payment. But that final payment is done through finance, uh the finance team or Ms. Ames Soul. Um, this will come to uh the next board meeting for the board's review and consideration. Uh should this go through, then the implementation, implementation timeline is for the winter season of this year. This um Arbiter Pay is used by everyone in the conference but us. Uh it does expedite payment to those officials. It is a bit of a uh delay in time. In getting, getting officials paid. I know Mr. Francisco can speak to that. Uh so, you know, again, they perform a service. They wanna get paid in a timely manner. This will help that. Another question coming out of finance, um as we know, we've tightened our belt with budgets, but asking to bring forward. Implementation of a new program and the costs associated with. The athletics department has said they have tightened their belts and will. Make the funds available by decreasing other. Other areas so that they could afford this, because it is that vital to them. So that's Arbiter Pay. Um as you heard, I mean, you speak to the sale of obsolete technology from Mr. Kozak. Um, high school uh boring and fiber that is coming up in the agenda. Dual language will be coming up on the agenda. Uh next is Quaver Ed and PE Resource Agreement. Uh currently, we don't really have a um curriculum for PE. We use this Quaver Ed for our music, so this would be uh for PE. I went to their website personally, looked at it. It looks like a great program. They have resources that we can share with our families. On health and wellness that we can send through Canvas and, and Dojo and, and the other applications that we use. They did offer a nine percent discount by signing a five-year agreement, and this would all be funded through the Ill Empowered Grant. But having the PE and the music curriculums aligned by the same provider, I think would be a good thing. That will come next meeting as well. Um further in the agenda, we'll hear from Ms. Bennett regarding parent presenter agreement. Uh next, we have the property tax uh relief grant. As you know, we had the opportunity to be awarded that for two years. Uh Ms. Ames Soul let us know, unfortunately. That will no longer be provided. It's no longer in the state budget. I know, same, same face we made. So, we're hoping, unfortunately, because we know when something comes out of a state budget. It doesn't necessarily make its way back in. Um we know times are really tough now, but. Uh we can check back next October, next October, so in a year. But no promises, but of course, we will check to see if that grant becomes available again. Uh we were awarded that uh for two years, which was a savings of eight million dollars to our taxpayers. We would love to have that opportunity again, but unfortunately, if the grant isn't there, we are unable to, obviously, to apply. But. Everyone, cross your fingers, toes, hopefully that will come back. We'll hear later uh regarding uh the tax levy. And then uh next is temperature monitoring system proposal. Uh our milk coolers monitoring the temperature to make sure obviously the milk stays at. The approved temperature so it's safe for our children to drink is a manual process. Sonic, Sonic Q, Sonic Q is a vendor that will bring in an automated process. I'm more familiar with this vendor and the job that pays me for pharmaceuticals. They keep drugs at a temperature for infusion patients. Uh this would again automate the process. We do it very manual. We have had some findings because it is a manual process. This will automate it, take that manual leg out of it. I think this will be a great tool for our food service and for Ms. Ames Soul in, in reporting. And again, this will come out of the food service budget. Again, this was one of the buckets, if you will, where we have. Quite a surplus, and we need to use this do- these dollars. And again, I can't think of a better way than to use these dollars and to bring in such a program as this. Again, keeping the milk safe for our students. And then next is a Skyward uh implementation update. Um as you may recall, we had an update in regards to Skyward. Uh just really to let you know uh as with, we've heard with implementations within the district, there's, you know. Some challenges that come with it. Some of the things we had hoped to be automated, it's. Uh still having to be a little bit of a more manual intervention, but they have definitely put some systems in place. With it having to be some more manual interventions. Uh but it's really just uh to keep the board abreast of this. Skyward implementation uh update that we had recently, that again, we're, we're still overcoming some of those obstacles. And that is it for finance. Unless Mr. Devera, nope. Any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you very much for that very thorough review. And next up, we will move to approval of open meeting minutes.
I need a motion to approve the October sixth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting minutes.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Ms. Lee. Hearing no additional conversation. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the following items. For the accounts payable report for one million, four hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. The previous motions report for five hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents. The August twenty twenty-five treasures report, the September twenty twenty-five P card report. And the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five employment report. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Mr. Jewett. Hearing no additional conversation. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to old business, and first up on old business is. The overnight field trip requests for Round Lake Music and Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, everybody. Uh at a previous board meeting, I had the opportunity to bring a overnight trip to the board for your review and consideration. Tonight, I'm here for two purposes. One, I wanna share some updates to some questions that were posed by the board, and then also seek your approval for this trip. Before I do that, I just wanna give a quick overview of the trip. So, we are looking for spring of two thousand twenty-seven to make a trip to New York City with our music program. For over a decade, Round Lake High School has traveled for these trips. And those trips include Nashville, Disney, New York, and New Orleans. Yeah, okay. Um so, just so we're aware that this trip is through Motor Coach that we're um bringing to you tonight. Approximately six days, five nights, and the cost ranges from fourteen hundred dollars to sixteen hundred dollars for this trip. That trip would be totally funded by student fundraising. At the last board meeting, there were um six questions that were brought for more information. First question was, is there potential to expand to additional ci- cities in the future? So, I'm gonna answer this question, but I'm also gonna put a caveat in here, okay? So, at the current time, we're not uh looking to expand this option, but we are open to a um surveying students. And getting some of their feedback on places that they may want to travel to. The, the reason that was given to, to me, I thought was excellent. Um then this was that. There is some sort of familiarity and safety with the places that they've traveled to, and you have to remember that many of our kids have never traveled before. So, for our, our staff to feel comfortable with where they're going, that's helpful for our students. And also, they're very familiar with these areas and the places that they go to, which helps our students be, just be more comfortable with that. Um talking to, to Matt Weber, he did say at one point in time, and Scott, I think you'll appreciate this, they did go to Nashville for a trip. Many of us would think that's an amazing place to go for music, but if that's only if you like country music. Unfortunately, our kids were not that into country music, so they didn't have that uh awesome experience that they were looking for. And they're also using this for an opportunity to recruit and retain students. And that didn't necessarily do that for the students, where they feel that New York City is one of those options along with Disney and New Orleans. Um the second question that was brought um about fundraising thresholds, what happens if a student cannot meet those? Entourage does at times help and support our students if they need, if need be, and they have done that in different cases. Where they have supported our students. One of the nice things about getting ahead of this and nice and early is that we actually. Allow this to become smaller payments for those families, which makes less of an impact. Um also, our boosters have been gracious enough to also help and support our students, so there is an opportunity to support those students in need. It uh question was brought up, does Entourage travel to other cities? Yes, Entourage does travel to other cities. Um they're not exclusive to, say, New York for this trip. Um the two areas, though, that they do um have strong connections with and ties. New York being one of them, that's the largest area that they do when they set up these trips, and they also have a strong connection with New Orleans. But there are other opportunities that we could explore. Once we get student information back, if that's something of interest. We're, we're confident that Entourage could, could accommodate that if, if need be. Alright, the fourth question, provide an overview of additional fundraising opportunities which you're exploring. One of the opportunities that we're exploring right now are just gourmet jumbo, jumbo lollipops. What's nice about this is it allows the kids to sell those on their individually, and there's a fifty percent margin that comes back to our school. Which is great for our students. There's different types of fundraisers too that can be done in groups such as car washes. That's a, 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 an example that's been used in the past. Problem with that is you have a large group of students who are going to do that, and that gets divvied out. Also, um the um I, I L M E uh conference is coming up soon. There'll be about four or five vendors there that uh our team will be talking to to explore different options. And also, at times, our boosters are approached with different options for fundraising. We'll explore those and see what, we're looking for margins that come back that, for our students to help support on those trips. There was a question about airfare. Um the cost and time differences for this was, wa- was information that was asked for. Just so we're aware, um when we did take the, use airfare, I think some of you guys had, had students involved on that. That had, that came down to, there was some, it was during COVID, um motor coaches weren't available at that time, and we were forced to use airfare. Problem was that is they added six hundred to eight hundred dollars to the trip. Scott, once again, um as adults, we may think airfare, we want that. Kids love the bus. They like to sit there, talk with their friends, and they, they actually find that as being something that they enjoy. Um and then also, when we do travel by motor coach, there's opportunity for, for, to make stops along the way. So, if there's a college along the way, and we can expose our kids to some different training opportunities, or, or, or the college experience. That's something that's not outfit allowed with, with air travel. Um the last question that we had, or you did, I, I mentioned this earlier, and this was in my first point. Yes, we can offer a survey to students. And, and to gauge their, I, um where, if there are any additional places that they'd like to travel to. Um but that's just not in the cards right now. We wanna explore this New York option first, but. And, and but that's something that our team is definitely open to. I can't give you a timeline on that without discussing that with them in further detail about what that would look like. But if that's something that the board would like us to do, we're open to doing that. If there's no other, are there any other questions or the, about the information provided?
Yes, I do. I just have a question for clarification. You mentioned Motor Coach and Entourage. So, do we use Motor Co- Motor Coach or Entourage or both?
So, uh Motor Coach meets bussing.
Oh, okay, I thought you, okay. I thought you meant like as a, like the brand Motor Coach, like as a service.
No, I'm just, bussing.
Okay, okay, I get it. But we use Entourage, right? Okay.
That's correct.
Uh that's what I thought, okay. I was just gonna say, just speaking for the Nashville trip, because my son was on it. I think they did enjoy it, just, yeah, it's a. Specific genre that maybe some of the younger students don't.
But it's also, uh it's exposure, and that's important for all students as well, to have those different exposures.
I mean, they did like the grand old, they got to perform on the grand old Opry, so I mean, that was, I thought pretty fabulous for them. But I just, I didn't wanna just miss any misnomers on the Nashville trip. Uh as far as additional, uh let me go back to Entourage here in my notes. So, are you saying that they offer. A payment plan for our families? Is that essentially what you're saying?
That's, that's the information that was provided me, that yes, that, that we can divide up payments. Um the longer timeframe that we have. The, the smaller the payments can be, it divided up.
So, here's gonna, here's gonna be another question. How long can we give our families? How long would they provide to our families so that they have that option to make payment?
I don't wanna give you an answer to something that I don't have the specifics of.
But if you could let us know.
Could let us know. To you in the weekly.
Can't remember what it was. So, I know that uh has, on the last two trips that I paid for. It didn't start to, maybe fundraising started two years before, if Able with the chocolate. Um sales, but payments started. Like in the fall.
Yeah, it was like five, yeah, uh for when Andrews was like five months.
It sounds.
It was a break, it was like down, break down to five months, maybe six months tops, but.
They were big chunks of money, though. Right, which is kinda where I'm getting to. I could, I, I couldn't remember how, what the timeline was. If it is the five months, is it possible to start working with Entourage so families get. Uh a longer timeframe, again, especially right now, as times are a little tighter for families. And again, we want to be able for our students to have the opportunity. Some families, probably most families, need a little more than five months if, you know. They're, you know, they don't fundraise.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. I know our, our music staff here is very excited or very eager. To get this approval so that they can get with Entourage and start scheduling this out and. Give our families as much time as possible to A, fundraise and B, work through a payment structure if needed.
I, I mean, I think. Well, having the, the fundraisers is great, whether it's popcorn or jumbo lollipops. If the cost is, you know, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars, that's a lot of popcorn and lollipops you gotta sell. So, some of the dollars are coming out of the kids or the parents', you know, checkbook directly.
Absolutely, I, I'm, I agree with you.
Uh I mean, that's, that's all I had.
Any additional questions from the board?
Alright, I need a motion to approve the overnight field trip request for Round Lake High School music program. Twenty twenty-seven trip to New York City. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee. I'm gonna give it to Ms. Larson. Second on Ms. Larson. Hearing no additional conversation. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
No.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that will bring us to approval of board position on ISB proposed resolutions. We did talk about this at our last meeting. Any questions from the board in regards to it? Again, just as a real high-level reminder. Um it's one resolution and several cleanup of language when it comes to constitution. ISB is recommending a do adopt across the board, and I didn't see anything different with it. Uh everyone else has their take there. If we don't have any conversation, then we can go to the approval.
Yeah, great. I need a motion to support the ISB Resolutions Committee recommendations as listed.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Ms. Klingler, seconded by Mr. Francisco. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that'll take us to the next step on that, which is the approval of the delegate and alternate for the twenty twenty-five Joint Annual Conference Delegate Assembly. Um in our conversation's last meeting, the, it feels like the recommendation.
Um, in our conversations last meeting, the feels like the recommendation. Was to approve Mrs. Negretti McGinnley as the delegate and myself as the alternate. Um, hearing no additional conversation, if we don't have it, let's go for an approval.
Need a motion to approve Mrs. Negretti McGinnley as the delegate and Mister Francisco as the alternate for the twenty twenty five Joint Annual Conference. Delegate Assembly being held on November twenty second, twenty twenty five in Chicago, Illinois.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Mister Jewett, catch your by like here, roll call please.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Devera?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Motion carries, did I hear, did I hear waffling there for a second? Alright, uh, motion carries, that'll take us to new business and first up on that is the Dual Language Connections contract.
Hello, thank you for having me. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk a little bit about the uh Dual Language Connections um contract. I was here earlier with the finance committee to talk about it um as well. I apologize for the short time in between. We just had this wonderful opportunity to be able to bring. The individuals who have written the book called Tandem Teaching to our district to work with our teachers specifically in the dual language program. Um, these individuals have a reputable background, um. One of the authors is one of the lead authors for the Guiding Principles of Dual Language. The other individual is uh an experienced dual language teacher in an international setting. They happen to be in the Chicago area during the time that we're gonna have our SIP day and so the opportunity arose. And we wanted to bring them to our district. Our staff had previously done some um. Book studies and participated with online workshops um with the book, but we wanted to be able to expand that opportunity to the rest of our teachers. To be able to coordinate and align some of our um teachings in dual language and ensure that there are cross linguistic connections between. Um, what we're doing and best practices in the field. So I'm hoping that you will approve this for us.
So this was reviewed at finance, um, and as Miss Luna mentioned, they just happen to be in the area, they are from Costa Rica. So, uh, having kind of all the stars aligned there, SIP day, they're in the area. Uh, take full advantage of and then just uh as a note, this is funded through Title III Grant as well.
This, hearing no additional conversation?
And you have motion to approve the Dual Language Connections contract in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Funded by Title III Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Most of my Mister Jewett, seconded by Ms. Lee, roll call please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Mister Devera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinnley?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to high school new course proposals and I'm going to. I have no idea who's presenting this one, so.
Yes, none of us are Jeff Ds, uh, we are here. We are here on Jeff's behalf, um, he is definitely the leader behind all of this work and getting the ball rolling on all of this. Um, and he has got a sick kiddo at home and another kiddo with a performance, so the three of us said, no problem. Uh, Jess and Sarah are heavily involved in the process as well, um, and so is Katie Wishaw this year because we have courses coming out of the departments that they support. Um, so to kick it off, I just um taking a look at the memo we have here, we have three courses that we're bringing for you today. Uh, we were really, really thoughtful, um, obviously with our budget situation to make sure that we weren't bringing something forward that was going to be pretty expensive. Um, but still would be pretty significantly beneficial for students. Um, so Jess and Sarah are gonna dive into the content um in the background and the three courses we're proposing. But you can see in the memo that the total cost is estimated at thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty seven dollars. Um, I do wanna call out, I I caught in looking through the memo, the three courses are a C L C. Dual Credit English one twenty one, A P Business and Personal Finance and in that table below you see the cost breakdown. Uh, but the math course uh that we're proposing is actually titled Math Fundamentals Two, that's just a slight typo, I apologize on that, but I caught that. Um, in our preparation for this, so Jess will be talking to us about the A P Business and Personal Finance. Um, and then Sarah will jump in in regards to the two English and math courses.
Um, so the first course to review is A P Business with Personal Finance. Students will study various topics of business, including marketing, budgeting, accounting and management. Um, the benefit of this course is that its alignment with a college level intro to business course. Students at the end of the course earning a three, four or five on the A P exam in May will receive college credit. Um, as outlined by their post-secondary institution of their choice. Um, the cost of this course is uh six thousand six hundred and twelve dollars for student materials and then the teacher training that uh goes along with an A P course.
Alright, uh, the first course I'd like to discuss is expanding our dual credit options with A C L C English one twenty one course. This course would be designed for seniors in year one, which would be a replacement to our current English Four Honors course. So this course would be focusing on, you know, building strong college level reading, writing and critical thinking skills for our students. Students earning a C or better would earn transferable credit to all Illinois community colleges. And a number of participating universities and colleges within the state of Illinois as well. As I mentioned, this would replace English Four Honors, so we looked at our current student enrollment to see about. The number of students that would qualify for dual credit. Currently, over ninety percent of our current English Four Honors had the course been offered this year. Would automatically qualify without any additional um testing needing needed. And the measurement for that is looking at G P A and E C T score and or their class rank. So there are metrics that C L C provides in terms of each of those, so a student could qualify in any of those three ways. If a student does not qualify for the dual credit course for enrollment, they can take the C L C placement test. So there is still that option, but most of our students would qualify without having to take that. I will say the students that we do have take the C L C placement test are very successful with that. As we've experienced with other dual credit course offerings here at the high school as well. And then a last component, even if they did not pass the course uh placement test through C L C. They can still enroll in the course itself, they just wouldn't qualify for the dual credit component. So they would still be able to earn high school credit, which would be an honors level course at the high school as well. Which would be equivalent to what they would be receiving now as an English four student in there. The course traditionally at the college level is a semester-long course, we are looking to have it be a year-long course. Because of the rigor of a college level course and as we're building that out there. You see the co- total cost estimate there is six thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. This is because we have to build out the course with C L C. And being that we're taking a semester-long course and expanding it into a year-long course, there's a little bit more build out for that. The uh C L C course does not have any required texts at this time, but we did build in a budget for two. Two extended texts for novels to be built into the course, so this cost estimate is at a maximum of what we think it would be. Um, not anything to exceed that. And then the second course that I'd like to talk about is the Math Fundamentals Two course. Uh, as you know, we rolled out uh Algebra One this year at the high school as we moved, as we are moving more to the traditional math pathway. So next year we will be rolling out our next level course, which will be geometry. With that, we would like to offer a support class for students enrolled in geometry who have identified math skill deficiencies. Particularly in algebra and some key geometry skills. So students that meet that metric, based on some standardized testing and data there, would also enroll in this Math Two Fundamentals course. So they would be concurrently enrolled in geometry as well as this Math Two Fundamentals course. It is kind of serving two purposes, not only to support their success in geometry. But then also supporting their future success in Algebra Two, which they would be taking the following year as well. We do currently offer Math Fundamentals One for our students who need that extra support, taking enrolled in our Algebra One course. So this course would replace our current model, which is Math Two Prep, which is currently a double block class. So there would be no staffing changes there, so it would be a swap from a Math Two Prep course into this Math Two Fundamentals course. More designed for that traditional math pathway and support those student needs. And the course, uh, the course funding there would only be for curriculum hours. Because the new core course curriculum through Savvas would provide our framework for the course that we have there. So we do not need any additional materials for supporting students into this course. Are there any questions that you'd like us to go over?
Yeah, I've got a question, the C L C class, is that a replacement for honors English?
Yes, it would currently replace our English Four Honors.
Okay, question, uh, the math, math fundamentals two. Is taking the place of math to prep, correct?
Correct.
Are there other classes? I know we've talked about uh eliminating the prep classes, for lack of a better term.
So the structure of the course would be different, uh, right now the math to prep is math two, but expanded into ninety minutes. So the student is enrolled in that math class with the same teacher for ninety minutes. This new structure, the student would be in a single period geometry course. And then they would have at a different period in the day, this math two fundamentals that is not directly tied to the geometry course. Um, at length, it would be more of filling those skilled deficiencies and and intervention support. So it'd be using their data to help target what it is that we want the students to fill, so we could look at their success. Not only in geometry, but then building that for Algebra Two, which they'd be taking in their third year.
Okay.
The other key uh piece I would point out is in eliminating the prep model, prep like Sarah said, extended the curriculum over two periods. So it was really hard for a student to potentially be moving out of prep at semester because it was just the curriculum more time in the day. But the moving to this model was more of a goal of really targeting and filling gaps so that you could hopefully see that achieved more likely. Within a semester's timeframe to open up more time in the student's schedule for another elective potentially. Whether it was freshman year or sophomore year, but that is the model we moved to in both E L A in English and in math for freshmen and then for sophomores.
Okay, yeah, I know that, that classes being a a double period block, that was, that was tough.
Yeah, it's still, the other piece that really hit our kids when we did the double period is they weren't getting any additional credit for that. So that was impacting student eligibility at times, um, and they weren't earning credit. So the way that we've structured it in this way is it allows them to get an elective credit. It it cannot be considered a math credit, cause it's not necessarily high school level math, it's more of an intervention course. But they are getting an elective credit, so when we're looking at eligibility now, it's definitely making a big difference. Cause some kids had double blocked math and double blocked E L A and that was only counting for one course each of them. And the credit piece was really tricky if they were failing one, cause they have to be passing a certain number of classes. So this helped a lot with eligibility, it was driven a lot through that process as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, the question on the um C C L C English one twenty one, I know you said it. Uh, replaces um English Four Honors and there's a few pathways so that they can get the dual credit. But ultimately they can take it even if they can't get the dual credit. What, how are we gonna communicate to those students and families so that they know? That even though they're taking a dual credit class, unfortunately they didn't qualify because some of they, if they do go on to college. And they're gonna have to still take that class, that's a prerequisite, they're gonna be like, I took it at high school, I I don't have to take it again.
Good question, so that will be communicated, we've been working with the high school counseling department as far as that information. Um, and ensuring that the students have that information and through the course curriculum guide. I think also, being that this will be our first dual credit within the the English department as as a core content area. We will work with our teachers in building out what that looks like in far as communication home. I do anticipate that we'll have, um, you know, high success rate based on our current uh metric. But uh we also want that it's a nice carrot as well, you know, especially senior year. And it's like, hey, I'm gonna slack off a little bit, you know, I'm doing fine. So we we hope that this is, we we anticipate especially in that class that I, we feel pretty confident in our success rate with that. But we will certainly communicate that out to our students and our families, both before they enroll and as they're in there. And then during the the course enrollment within that.
Yeah, cause I I that communication is gonna be imperative, because again, when they, if they do choose that path. I think I I took, I took a dual credit class, I don't need to take this and I'd hate for them to find out then. When you're paying per credit hour, whoops, you gotta take it again.
Absolutely, we'll make sure that that's a top priority for us.
Great, thank you. As a parent, um, of a student who was in a double block math class. For two years, um, and missed out on many electives. Um, and now has a rigorous senior year. I am very happy to see that that, we're moving away from that, um, because ninety minutes is a lot. For a student is not, who's already struggling in math and you you've lost him, at least my student. Um, you you lose after the normal class period and then either he's just looking out the window and not learning anything anyway. And so now he's missing out on extra electives and not doing well in math, so, um. And once he was put in a regular block, he did fabulous. Um, so I'm happy, I know my son is not the only one who struggled with the double blocks. So I am really excited that that's moving.
And and I think it's important to also note by having the two classes separate from each other throughout the day. It makes scheduling a lot easier and opens up some opportunities, because when a student has ninety minutes blocked and it has to stick together. And if band is only offered at this time or choir in different elective opportunities, even if they have room, it has been more of a challenge. So this will also open up a student's schedule and more flexibility to ensure that they can enroll in electives. When they had that opportunity because of the flexibility of only moving one period around.
I would say too, just to call out your note of how he performed better when he was in a single block class, that's one of the things we talk about a lot too. Is making sure that our students are exposed in a classroom where there's peers of all different levels. Um, so we just find that when you're putting every single student in a classroom that is struggling or doesn't like math. That adds a whole nother layer of challenge, um, so this way, yes, there is still a period designed to support them, but that's the sole purpose of that class. Their gen uh typical geometry class is with any other kid who's taken geometry, no matter what level they're at. Um, so we just find that to be powerful and we were hopeful, um, and so far this year, we feel our freshman. So uh structure has definitely been better than what we've historically done, so.
And I'll definitely throw out there too, uh, thank you on the A P Business with Personal Finance. Uh, I know the board has asked for that, especially when it comes to the finance component and the the personal building and all of that. Uh, so looking to layer that in, uh, definitely thank you for that and that looks like a a very good addition and I'm very thankful that that's coming across.
Yeah, we're excited about that one, we think that's a pretty accessible A P class to pretty much any student. Some A P classes like an A P Calc or A P Spanish, like, you know, you just say you have to have known a lot before that. Um, but A P Personal Finance um is definitely something we think we can get all kinds of students engaged in, so we're excited about it too. It's actually a new course, just starts next year through the college board, so good job by the college board too, I would say.
Alright, hearing no additional conversation on that. And is this one coming back at the next meeting or? Thank you. Alright, then that will take us to our next topic, which is overnight field trip request, Winter Guard. Mister Peterson again.
Good evening again, um, so I'm here tonight to bring for your considerate, consideration and review. An overnight trip for our Color Guard, um, this one's gonna be a little bit unique, um, so. Our our Color Guard has a long tradition of competing at at both regional and national competitions. Where they have experienced success and have been champions multiple times in the these types of events. Um, this year, we want to explore the opportunities for competing at the W G I Nationals. And you'll see this listed in this request as a primary request, but you also see a secondary request. For an alternate trip to the W G I Flint Regionals. The reason being that in in past years, the timeframe from which we registered for the national competition and and when we tried to do that. We would still be well within that timeline, unfortunately this year, it filled up fast. We would still be well within that timeline. Unfortunately, this year, it filled up faster than ever. So what we, we have the ability to do is one, be on a waitlist for WGI Nationals. Which takes place in Dayton, Ohio, April eighth through eleventh. But i- as a contingency plan to still give our students an opportunity to compete, um, at a high level. We're, we're looking for your consideration for alter, an alternate trip in Flint, Michigan, February twentieth to twenty-second. Um, in, in speaking with Jamie Dor- Dominique, we are able to get on this waitlist. And we would have to be hopeful that we would have an opportunity to get into that. But we do still wanna have a backup contingency plan to ensure that our students get an opportunity to compete at that level. Um, i- if you look at, at the breakdown here, the two, the, the cost of the two trips are outlined within this. Within this proposal, um, the WGI Nationals, that's made cost for the trip, um, is. So between twenty-five hundred dollars roughly to twenty-six hundred dollars. Um, the primary way that these trips will be, will be funded is through fundraising from our students. There's also, there's some uh, contributions from the boosters, but that's for, for items such as snacks. And um, and meals. Um, so, so, um. There's the, the difference in the cost for the two trips, if you look at the WGI, the Nationals, it's a longer trip. That's why the cost for uh, the lodging is more expensive. There's also a rental, space rental for the Nationals, w- with Flint, Michigan, that would be included in, in, in that trip. Um, so at this time, if there's any questions, I would be open to, to take those and I can present back with the information later then.
The couple of questions I have, uh, number one, I see the transportation, which is district transportation, but it's just thrown in as TBD. So I'm assuming that that's not included in the total estimated cost. Um, so I would be very curious as to, well, we're still gonna have to pay for even our own buses, our bus drivers, bus driver meals, et cetera. So what does that look like on both of those? And then just as a clarification, you're looking for basically approving one or, one either or. So.
So I'm looking for approval for both of tho- for both of the trips as that we would, we would put in on the waiting list for the Nationals. But in the event that we don't get on that waiting list, this is a backup.
Correct, okay, so, but, long story short, we get approved, we go to Dayton, we don't get approved, we go to Flint.
Yeah, we would only go to one trip, but I just wanna have a contingent, just contingency backup plan. So that those students get that opportunity to compete in the event that we don't get into the national event.
And then my other question, uh, in addition to the extra transportation costs, it's not included there. Um, what, where basically does that extra grand plus come from? When it comes to going to Dayton for the, for the Nationals versus going to Flint? So is that just gonna be fundraised? Is it going to come out of whose budget?
So I, I just wanna make sure I have a clear understanding of your question, so I can provide that information to you. You, you want, so when we look at the grand totals for both trips, right, approximately, there's about a thousand dollars different from those. You would like to know how that is, the breakdown of the, those costs and where, if it goes to students, if it's coming out of.
Correct, yeah, where, where's the accountability coming from? Who, who's footing that extra thousand dollars?
I can provide you with a full breakdown of what those costs look like and where, where the funding source comes for each of those. With the, uh, detailed transportation costs in there.
Thank you, look forward to that.
So I mean, it looks like the extra cost for Nationals is because of the extra nights, so, and. Registration for Nationals is obviously more costly than the regional. But the question I have is with it being a thousand dollar difference. And knowing that we're on a waitlist for this, what kinda opportunity and timeline are we providing for our students and families? So they can fundraise for this? Because a thousand dollar difference on a potential is a big difference. Because we're only on a waitlist. So if it, if it does come to fruition that we get off this waitlist and our fam- our students can go. Our families now have to come up with twenty-five fifty to twenty-six fifty versus fifteen hundred.
I, I think it's important to point out too that these are total costs for the trip.
Okay.
These are not individual costs. If you see like the lodging, six rooms, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a night at three nights, twenty-two fifty for total. That's a total cost for this trip.
The twenty-two fifty?
Yeah, twenty-two fifty to twenty-six fifty cost, that's the total cost for the trip, for the, for the group.
So the twenty-two fifty is what the student pays?
No, no, this is the group.
All the students, okay, it's not individual, okay, that, we still need what those costs are.
And I, I can absolutely provide that for you.
Because again, it's still gonna, uh, there's gonna be a price difference between the two.
I agree, and so just so I can bring exactly what you want next time, would you like a potential breakdown of cost overall? And a breakdown potentially for each student? Would that be helpful?
I, I would think so.
I'd, I, I would like to see it as an overall and, and as well as a per student.
No issue, I can do that for you.
I always ask about chaperones. I meant to ask on the other trip as well, but this is something that concerns me, thank you. Um, or we're doing the background checks, we're making sure we're adding those people.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're wel- you're welcome.
I, I still have another question though, uh, with this going on in April eighth and being on the waitlist, do we know when we would find out? If we made the lottery or not, so to speak?
That'll be great information for me to bring back to you.
Great point, especially with the being February, it's like, where's, where's the cutoff? Where do we have to make that decision and?
Well, I mean, it's middle of October, before you notice, you know, it's Thanksgiving, Christmas, and it's new year and, you know. April seems theoretically far away, but it's not, and again, you're talking about financial planning for families who, you know, again. We all wanna give our kids the best experiences and, and more experiences than we ever had, but it costs money, and with money, they need time.
I agree.
And then as far as the lodging, especially with going to Dayton, Ohio for Nationals. Are they picking this, yeah, the block of rooms? Do we have to stay where they're, or are we picking?
So I know we ran into some issues with wrestling in the past and I was.
Kinda why I'm asking that. Obviously knew why I was asking.
Yeah, I figured you were asking that, thanks, you threw me a, a softball there, um. I, I, I will, I'll, I'll get the information exactly of what hotels they're saying, as long as they align to the standards that we have within our athletic department. So that we ru- don't run into similar situations that we ran into with our, uh, with our, our wrestling trip pri- in prior years.
A- again, accommodations are important, safety, security, and cleanliness of places is important. Then last, last question, well, what fundraising opportunities are they going to provide? And again, especially if we're gonna have one that could potentially cost more.
Once again, I will bring that information back to you with specific details and, and very similar, hopefully with what I brought with, uh. With our band trip and with potential breakdowns of what our return looks for our students on that.
Okay, great.
Any additional questions, conversation? Hang on, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your consideration, have a good evening.
And that will take us to Mr. Kozak and I'm not even gonna get into, I don't even know what it is, so go for it.
All right, good evening. In support of our HR department's relocation to the high school mobile. The tech department partnered with our directional boring vendor CRW. To expedite the installation of a dedicated fiber network connection between the high school and the high school mobile. The new network connection provides increased bandwidth and improved reliability for our HR department. And we also added a second raceway for future fire alarm system expansion. Total cost of the project is eighteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars and will be paid from the technology department budget. This item was also shared at tonight's finance committee meeting as well.
So as Mr. Kozak mentioned, this was at finance, um, a- as mentioned, with HR relocating to the mobiles back here. Uh, with leaving the welcome center, uh, they needed, uh, dedicated, they were working off wireless.
Bridge solution.
Yeah, bridges a solution, obviously specifically HR, not that anyone's work is more important than the others, but specifically HR. They need a dedicated, dedicated line. And with that, I need a motion to approve the high school mobile directional boring slash fiber with CRW. The amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
So.
Second.
Much my Mr. George, second to my Mrs. Cleveland, roll hot please.
Mister Dever?
Yep.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGilley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Miss Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And that will take us to the aggregate tax levy for twenty twenty-five in Miss Amsoil.
Good evening. Tonight we have in front of you for review is our estimated two thousand twenty-five property tax levy. This is our property tax levy for levy year two thousand twenty-five, but if, um, you're interested. It is t- the payments that will be made in two thousand twenty-six. So what we're going to do is go through tonight the estimated levy. Um, we have prepared a, a new forward-facing transparent document that we intend to post. On the website that is kind of designed to explain everything you didn't wanna know about your levy. And maybe a little bit about what you did wanna know about your property tax levy. Um, but this is a document that's not only designed for the board, but for the community as well. Um, one of I think the most beneficial things that, um, it provides is on page fifteen. It is a summary of, of that question you probably get at all of your water coolers at work, which is. My blue card says my property tax are, my house value is going up twelve percent, does that mean my property taxes are going up? Twelve percent. So it goes through and it explains that answer to that question, which is I think probably the one you get the most. But tonight on the agenda, we are here to actually adopt our estimated property tax levy. Our levy by definition is a formal request by the board. Um, for the property tax revenue that we would like to generate for the coming year. It's a formal request that has to be sent to the county clerk and it determines the maximum amount. That the district can raise its property taxes for the years. When you're looking at your property tax levy, the purpose of the levy is to actually raise funds to enhance our programs, obviously. Um, eh, the importance of it is that this is twenty-seven percent of our total revenue. So this is a big chunk of our revenue, second only to our evidence-based funding. And so it's, it's one of our, our largest revenue sources and important therefore. Um, some of the terms that I'm gonna be using tonight would be aggregate tax levy, that's basically your, the entire tax levy minus. What we are levying for debt service. Um, again, the debt service levy is the amount of money that we're levying to pay our bond payments. And our, the property tax extension limitation law, you'll hear me say PTEL or PTAB. Um, that limits the increase that the district can receive over from year to year. And it limits it to CPI or five percent, whichever is lower. And the other term that I'm gonna be using tonight is CPI, which is consumer price index. That's the inflation flat factor that the law uses to basically determine how much we can increase our levy from year to year. If you look at the process itself, tonight we are completing that first part of the process, the estimate. This is the estimate, the estimate has to be presented to the board and adopted by the board. No less than twenty days prior to bringing the final adoption. Now, our plan is to bring the final adoption to the board at the first meeting in November. At that same time, the second part of the process happens, which is our truth and taxation. The truth and taxation law says that if we are asking for five percent or greater. That we are required to hold what's called a truth and taxation hearing, although we're not requesting greater than five percent. Transparency is just, i- it's good form to just hold your truth and taxation hearing either way. So we will be holding a truth and taxation hearing, even though we are not requesting more than five percent. Finally, the, once the board adopts our final levy, it is sent to the county clerk and it must be filed with the county clerk. No later than the last Tuesday in December. When we're taking a look at the components of the levy. Um, the levy calculation itself encompasses several different factors. Are, there are rate limits, for example, we're only allowed to levy point seven five towards our operating. Um, o- operations and maintenance. There are also minimum limits, which we're gonna talk about later. Um, but this really, the rate limits really played more of a, a role in the levy process. Back when you had an ed fund limit, which they have eliminated the ed fund limit, we no longer have that limit. Um, but the levy calculation is made up of not only rate limits, but it's also made up of your prior year tax extension. Consumer price index, which we know because it's always the consumer price index from the January prior to the, um. Levy that we're bringing before you. But the last two, the ye- two yellow circles that we have, those are unknown factors. We have estimates right now. But these two factors, which are big components into, in determining our total levy rate. Um, they will be unknown until the spring of two thousand twenty-six. So that's an important caveat to understand when we talk later about safeguarding our levy. And why we do something called a balloon levy. But those are our new property and our EAV. We have received estimated new property and EAV. That is located inside the property tax document that we gave you, I actually provided a copy of what was sent to us from the county. For your information. So what is consumer price index? Consumer price index is kind of measuring a basket of goods, if you think about it. Um, it's designed to take into account things such as transportation, food, medical care. And it says, how much, if you were to look at those things a year ago, do they cost, how much more do they cost now? And there's a, a calculation that's done by the government and they determine that from year to year to year, what that rate is. And the rate that applies to this year's levy is two point nine percent. Now, why is that important? The law itself is designed so that it limits us to saying, okay, well, you can only take back from your taxpayers. What we're expecting the cost of your goods to go up. So that's a little bit in the spirit of why they set U CPI in the calculation of your levy. But this year CPI you can see is two point nine, we had the two highest years since they enacted the PTEL law. That happened in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand, or two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, where it actually maxed out at the five percent. But we're not unfortunately at that rate for this year. If we take a look at taxing increment financing, this plays a factor for the district in that TIFs. Uh, uh, you're, they're also called TIFs. TIFs are where, um, the Round Lake, um, village will come together and say this certain portion of our boundaries. We're going to set their EAV and we're gonna freeze it for the period of twenty-three years. So over twenty-three years, even though the value of that property is increasing, the district does not get to see any new revenue from that. And then what happens is at the end of the twenty-three years, that new revenue will, will come to the district. There are only two TIF districts within Round Lake's boundaries right now, and they are not set to expire until two thousand thirty-four. And two thousand forty-four, so we're not gonna be seeing that money for a while, but it's important to keep these on our radar. It's also important to, to notify you if we have any new TIF districts. Because again, that limits the amount of money that the district receives in the, in the short and the long run. If you take a look at the property tax extension law, um, it's made up basically of your EAV, which is your equalized assessed valuation. Your rate, and there's a formula that's designed to actually determine that rate. And although it's in very small print, um, we're gonna go through the details of that formula and its actual calculation for this year. Um, but it's basically, it says what property taxes did you receive last year? You get those property taxes plus CPI, and then it divides it by your equalized assessed valuation to come up with an average rate. And then that rate is then applied to each house value when determining how much each taxpayer is going to pay. So if we take a look at the calculation for this year, you need four pieces of information to calculate our rate. You need last year's property tax extension, you need our estimated EAV or, um. Equalized assessed valuation, you need the new property that we're estimating for the district, and then you need CPI. So the numerator is again, that prior year, um, estimated or prior year tax extension, multiply that by CPI. We get the thirty-two million seven hundred and one thousand, that is your numerator. The denominator then becomes the estimated EAV minus. The denominator then becomes the estimated E A V minus the new property because they do not take into account the new property when they're giving you the limitation. New property generates brand new income for the district, which is a great opportunity for us if we were having large eh um building projects and those kinds of things. But unfortunately, we don't necessarily have that for this year. So our limiting rate is then calculated by saying that thirty two million seven hundred and one thousand divided by the the um valuation of seven hundred and twenty three bill billion? Million, million. I'm I'm looking at that correctly. So we have a rate of four point five two two zero for this year. So when you actually apply that rate to the new property, we will generate a total of a brand new twenty six thousand dollars of property taxes for our new property in the district. Again, if we were to see a large influx, large building projects happen, um some of those districts that are not necessarily completely built out, those those um new property um opportunities present a large influx of revenue, but we're not going to see that for this year. But that is how the property tax limitation um rate is actually calculated. So what happens when you're looking at that rate versus tax values? Cause people will think, well, my tax value is going up. There is an inverse relationship between the rate that we charge and the value of property because the value of property is the denominator in that factor. So if the property goes up, that number's gonna be smaller. If the property goes down, that value's gonna be higher. So you can see in the um the graph that's presented here that the district saw se- several years of property tax or or of E A V decline. And what happened in those years is we saw our rate drastically increase. This this year, these last two years, we've seen twelve percent increases in the property or in the property values in Round Lake, which is a great thing for our taxpayers. But that does not mean that their property taxes are going up twelve percent again. Um eh and you can refer to that document for more information on that. So we're coming to you with what's called a proposed or an estimated levy, but it's important to safeguard that levy. So we actually do something that's called a balloon levy. A balloon levy is where we ask for more than we actually think that we will receive because some of those factors are unknown until s- um spring of two thousand twenty six. This safeguards us so that we are in a position where we can make sure that we maximize that rate, that we get every dollar that we can. Um and then finally, in the spring of two thousand twenty six, we will finalize our extension and actually firm up that rate with the county. But we will not be able to levy any more than what we have requested. So it's again important that we balloon it just a little bit. So why do we safeguard for unknowns? We have variances in our equalized assessed valuation. We could have variances in our new property growth. And we need to make sure that we leave a a little bit of room for there for us. And then finally, there can be changes with T I F S. There could be change, other significant changes that can happen that would impact our rate. So we again, we balloon our levy just us a little bit. Um so what we have on this next slide is this shows you not only our two thousand twenty four levy year, which is last year's levy year and how much we levied by fund. But it also shows you our ballooned extension, which is what we're asking for. But that final column shows you what we anticipate we will receive because even if we ask for twenty percent, even as if we ask for five percent, we will only receive what we are legally allowed to receive. So even though the district is asking for a four point oh five percent increase overall, we only anticipate we're gonna get a two point three nine percent increase. One of the big changes that I want you to take a look at on this slide is the significant difference in how we are levying this year versus prior years. If you look at each of those funds, for example, the um working cash fund, last year we had um levy almost thr- three hundred thousand dollars. This year we are only gonna be levying five thousand dollars. We have significantly reduced all of the non mandatory or 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 all of those funds where we have fund balances that can sus- support the expenditures that we're estimating for the coming year. We've done that because in doing so, we can repurpose those funds up into the education fund. So you will see the education fund is significantly increasing this year as opposed to what we had in two thousand twenty four. There's a couple areas that I wanna identify. Number one would be our operations and maintenance fund. We will be levying the maximum there because we not only eh the levy does not fully support the money that we need to run the operations. We have had, we've been sending evidence based funding to our operations fund as well to help support that and we have no fund balance to support any additional expenditures. The next one I wanna identify is our transportation. We do have very large fund balance in the transportation fund, so why are we proposing that we're gonna levy about eight hundred thousand dollars there? That is because if you do do not levy at least point one two of your rate towards your transportation, then when you go to file your transportation claim, the state kinda dings you and says, well, you're not levying enough and asking your taxpayers enough, so we're not gonna pay you as much as we owe you. So one of the things that we're doing is also making sure that we not only maximize those areas that we need to, but also levy the bare minimum where we can to be sure we're also recouping the maximum revenue in other sources. So that's the reason why, even though we have a fund balance in transportation, we are gonna levy a small amount in transportation. Now, um the there was a new law passed, I wanna say it was about three years ago, that says that we are required to report to the board the cash reserve balance. It's called our cash reserve balance disclosure. One of the things I wanna point out is that if you look at F Y twenty four, we had roughly thirty nine percent of our um cash balances in reserves and we had about thirty six percent of our ca- of our fund balance in reserves. Given um our F Y twenty five final figures as well as our projected F Y twenty six budget, you can see that those are gonna go down from that thirty nine percent down to thirty one percent and from thirty six percent fund balance down to twenty two percent fund balance. So we are again working towards utilizing those fund balances. Um the next slide goes through and does the same thing, but it does it by fund. And what this does is this shows the board basically how we're estimating our our kind of our revenues and our expenses for F Y twenty seven. So we're looking out two years. This does not take into account any budget reductions that we are planning on implementing for F Y twenty seven. This is strictly if we were to continue as is, this is what our our um our balances would be. The reason that I'm showing you this is because it's important to note that even with the drastic reductions that we're doing in each of the funds for only levying about five thousand dollars in in several of the funds, you can see that all of our fund balances and all of our cash balances are estimated to end positive, which is what we're looking for at the end of the day. We're trying to be very futuristic looking, looking forward, making sure that even if we're only levying the bare minimums, we're still not putting ourselves in a situation where we're not financially sound. Does anyone have any questions? Now, if you really wanna put yourself to sleep tonight when you get home, there is a wonderful document now. The last, I'd say thirty pages of this document is strictly resolutions. So again, the the first ten fifteen pages, those are where you're gonna get the information about the levy about, you know, what you can talk to your neighbors about and if they have questions. Also feel free to send them my way. If they have questions, I'm happy to answer them at any time. How does this impact my tax bill and so forth?
Uh so this was reviewed at finance as Miss Ameswell mentioned, um. And as she mentioned, the the twenty twenty five estimate uh every tax levy document, well all lengthy, I think it has a lot of great information. I know she called up specifically slide thirteen and fourteen, I believe it is, fourteen fifteen? Fifteen? Thirteen. It okay, yeah, thirteen. Um again, has great information for our community as you know, when you get that blue card and your taxes like, whoa, why are they going up? You know, and the sometimes assumptions are made because of the school district, but some really good information, I know. Um Miss Ames and I, Miss Ameswell and I spoke. And we kinda talked about how we get more information to the community, maybe videos and such. This might be an opportunity to do that with the community to help explain, you know, the blue card, your tax bill and eh yeah, for at least in my tenure, the documents attached here really go into great detail and explaining a lot of the, again, the the jargon that we use and how it affects you as a as a taxpayer.
Additional questions, conversation? Hearing none. Thank you very much on that.
I do have action items that need to be read.
Yep. All right. I need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the notice of the public hearing for the levy year twenty twenty five as presented.
So.
Second.
Much my Mister Jewett, second of my Misses. Roll call please.
Miss Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mister Devera? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just so you know, there's multiple resolutions in here. I have to read them individually. Okay, just wanted to make sure everyone knew. I need a motion to adopt the resolution regarding estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the levy year twenty twenty five as presented. Did I read that right or did I cross? Okay.
Second.
Much my Mister Jewett, second of my Misses. Roll call please.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnley?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Devera?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the estimated aggregate tax levy for the levy year twenty twenty five as presented.
Second.
Much my Mister Jewett, second of my Misses. Roll call please.
Mrs. Kingler?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Mister Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve to adopt the notice of proposed property tax increase for the Brown Lake Area Schools Community School District one sixteen as presented.
Some of second.
Much my Mister Jewett, second of my Misses. Roll call please.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnley?
Yes.
Miss Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Devera?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will take us to Mrs. Bennett and parent presenter agreement.
So at the second September meeting, the board approved uh one eh uh independent contractor agreement for our B pack and pack parent presenters. Uh we had two presenters that night. One was responsible for the Spanish session, the other for English. Uh the one who was going to be handling our English present presentations this year uh had a family emergency, which we found out a couple days after you approved that contract. Um so our uh parent outreach outreach and engagement specialist Maria Kalunga was able to uh research some other opportunities and what is available through Illinois P twenty network and um Northern Illinois University. And so we are proposing that contract this evening at in the amount of two thousand nine hundred sixty two dollars and fifty cents.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, this was uh reviewed at finance and again, as you heard, just because due to s- uh circumstances, uh they had to reach out to find another presenter. Please know my sweatshirt is no way endorsing N I U, but always appreciate the reference to a northern, but um again, it's just really due to a personal situation that we had to reach out, get another presenter. All right. I need a motion to approve the parent presenter agreement with Illinois P twenty network.
Some.
Much my Misses. Seconded by Mister Jewett. Roll call please.
Mister Devera?
Yep.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnley?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Then back to Mrs. Bennett.
As we referenced during the transportation presentation this evening, we are looking for the um board's approval of a new serious safety hazard finding form for Round Lake Middle School. Um this would uh allow eligibility for transportation for Round Lake Middle School students who live in the neighborhood uh south of Rollins and Lotus. Right now we have a crossing guard there that um assists students crossing that road. Um but uh that area does qualify as far as we're concerned using the the calculation that is part of that form with I dot, we do anticipate that that will be approved by them. Um but it does require your approval first. As far as uh potential costs go, there there is not, we do not anticipate any additional costs. It'll be covered through one existing route that goes to Round Lake Middle School already from the south end of town. And then we have two drivers that have availability during that time slot that would pick up those routes to um provide the transportation to those uh approximately two hundred students.
I just wanna say, I'm you know, even through this process, as bumpy as it was with transportation this year, we found an opportunity to to get more busing to students, so they don't have to cross. It's it is a very busy and dangerous intersection, I I believe as parent.
Hearing no additional conversation.
Need a motion to approve the serious safety hazard funding form for Round Lake Middle School.
Some moves.
Much my Misses. Seconded by Mister Jewett. Roll call please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mister Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingler?
Yes.
Mister Francisco?
Yes.
Mister Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnley?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will take us to positive occurrences.
Okay, so excuse me, the band went to Marengo and I was so delighted because um they did a really good job. It was actually like one of the best shows they had done and they had completed the performance where, you know, they add like sections each time they go, so they had the whole performance. But what I was delighted about was seeing so many parents there, cause it's a good solid hour drive. But many, many parents were there representing Round Lake, so I was just delighted about it and I just wanted to shout it out.
I can say we had the Hispanic Heritage uh celebration uh at the civic center. So it's great to see families and of course I always enjoy uh the student performance. Uh kind of a po- I mean, it's a good pod, but the last home game, I mean, it's the end of football season, but uh again, good, you know, student and family turnout for the last home football game.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear about Hispanic uh celebration. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that one because I was at the hi- the girls regional championship game where uh our high school girls actually won the I H S A regional for flag football. Um and it was great. We were able to host it in the stadium, the whole nine yards there. Um fortunately, the season ended a little prematurely for them the next week. Uh but still an amazing job that they did um raising, yep, that's back to back regional championship games uh for that program. Um and they just keep raising the bar. Uh in addition, just keep it on your calendars. Tomorrow night, we've got the boys regional of soccer section, sorry, regional soccer um tournament is here. Um but our boys will be playing at six o'clock, I believe, so if you can make it out, definitely do that. Uh semifinals are tomorrow. And the finals will be on Friday. Uh so again, a great job of us being able to host and and show off what we have here in the district as well. Um and then also just the communications, making sure that we're staying on top of communications. Uh thank you to the administration team uh to the staff of being communicative, keeping everybody in the loop with all the things that are going on. Um we we are a community and the only way we're gonna get through everything is as a community uh being able to talk to each other and let each other know what's going on. So thank you for that and for that work coming out of the offices as well.
Any additional positive occurrences? All right, hearing none there. We'll move to future agenda items. Anyone have future agenda items they would like to put on the calendar?
I was just thinking about when the former student came and did the public um comment. And I think I've mentioned this before. I'm just wondering if there's some way that I think I'm just reiterating, some way that we can, especially with public comments like that, that we really wanna encourage more public comment and more engagement is to keep, to encourage some sort of engage- More public comment and more engagement is to keep, to encourage some sort of engagement. Without having it turn into a large conversation, right? So I, I don't know what that loo- I don't know what that looks like.
Well, I think. You're following up on some of the earlier board meetings. Yeah, we'll bring, we're going to bring information back for the board's consideration.
All right, hearing nothing else on future agenda items at this time. We'll move to, I need a motion to convene and close session as permitted by statute five ILCS one twenty slash two. For the purposes discussing the following, closed meeting minutes, five ILCS one twenty slash two C twenty one. Litigation, five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven and employment matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C one.
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Mrs. Klingler. Roll call please.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will take us to closed session and that will end our open session for the evening. Uh, we do not have anything else in open session afterwards, so for our online, we'll be adjourning the meeting for tonight. Uh, everyone have a great evening and we will see each other in two weeks at our next meeting and we will now convene in closed session. Thank you all.